How the pictures turn out?
Good, ma'am.
Okay, we're kind of looking at them, you got a link to them?
Yep, they're on the website.
Okay, it's one o'clock, I'd like to call our workshop meeting to order. Our workshop today is specifically for the employee handbook. The date is February nineteenth, twenty twenty. If you would, everybody that's not a department head, our guests that are here today, if you would hold your questions to the end of the meeting. We will have questions from the audience about the handbook that we've discussed. But this meeting's for the department heads as well as the council to discuss suggested changes. As you know, several months ago, I asked councilmen and councilwomen to give me a red line changes they wanted by December thirtieth, and Ms. Walker was the one that gave me the changes in the handbook that she thought was appropriate. So at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ms. Walker and let her have questions and answers with the handbook.
So, actually, we have the department heads here. I don't want them to wait until the end to ask questions because we're collaborating on this employee manual together. And so we'll start with the selection and hiring process. And I'm assuming we do all the same thing that I did. Okay, so I'm on the second, looking at the second paragraph of the selection and hiring process. The only thing that has been changed there, when you see the red line, where it says before the mayor and council, the recommendation will be dropped before the mayor and council. So basically, what's been done with this employee manual is to add the council in along with the mayor. Whereas some things have been solely up to the mayor's butt, I've added in the council. So if you have any questions as we go through questions or comments, then we'll move forward.
Mr. Mayor, can I approach?
Sure.
All right, you can go ahead too. As you all remember, our last workshop, I requested the big table, any changes until the department heads can kind of look at it and digest some of this. And Public Works, I'll pass it now, Public Works had a meeting last week, and we discussed, went through it line item by line item, on the changes that were proposed. Also, we have some things that hadn't been mentioned in the employee handbook that we think needs to be addressed at this time since we're doing it. We'll start on Councilwoman Walker's, changes on page twenty-three. If you look what I handed out, you can follow as it goes. On twenty-three, we'd like to make the suggestion that the personnel committee be kept intact with the council members and chairman, the council can even appoint the committee members, however they want to choose that. The chairman and committee members need to be available for the meetings held during normal city business hours. Minutes of each meeting needs to be kept and made available to all council members in a timely fashion in order to keep them apprised of personnel matters. This method will maintain city personnel issues to be handled in a timely fashion and give employees an adequate appeal process. The reason I say an adequate appeal process is what is proposed is not adequate appeal process, because if you're disciplined by the council, your only appeal is to the council. It's what was proposed in this, what we saw here. So that's the reason we would like to keep the personnel committee so you could be judged by your peers with council oversight. Then if something's disagreeable with that employee, they do have a valid appeal process by going to the council. Whereas now, if the council does the discipline, then you have it set up for the council to be your appeal process. So you're kind of in a no-win situation there, if you have an appeal. That was our opinion from what we've looked at over here.
Well, the council would be the second opportunity to question the action, right?
If the personnel committee...
According to your proposal.
Yes, ma'am, the way it is.
And according to what Ms. Walker is proposing is the second part of the appeal would have to go to regular court, which would be costly. Okay, got it.
No, 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 the council.
Yeah, but, yeah, but the council, and then the second time, if they don't agree with the council, they can take it to real court.
Correct.
Yeah.
But the way they've got it proposed, you don't, if the council hears it from the beginning, if it goes past that, it's got to go to court?
Right.
There's not true appeal process.
Let me ask you something, Martha. When you have an employee under you that's, needs to be disciplined, you don't discipline that person, right? You just automatically turn over to the personnel committee? How's that work?
It depends on the level of discipline. Okay. I mean, I kind of knew that, but I didn't know, to me, it seemed like the department heads would be the ones to discipline employees. We get, we get the ball rolling if it needs to be. Have any of y'all ever made yourself aware of what our disciplinary sheets are?
Write-up forms.
Write-up forms, okay. I would suggest to do that, and it covers a lot of the stuff that y'all thought weren't being done in this manual. And if y'all bear with me, we'll cover that in just a second. So that was our proposal on the changes on page twenty-three. And again, this is just a proposal, we're asking the council to consider some of the changes, because we're the ones that have been year after year having to make this work and utilizing it. So we're just asking to be heard. Okay, on page twenty-four, again, we'd like to maintain the personnel committee under the previously discussed guidelines, which the guidelines were a committee of our peers, and if the council deems necessary, they be the appointing persons to appoint the people on the committee. And if they want to have a council member sit as chair, that's fine, but just remember, this is conducted during regular business hours, and if you're the chair, you'll be expected to attend quite often during business hours. So that, and if that's no problem, no big deal. And I think by keeping the minutes and getting them to y'all in a timely fashion, it will keep y'all in the know of what's going on in personnel. And if we need to come up with something else...
Well, I don't think we need a personnel committee, we just need to get us a human resource person, and then that will take care of all of that.
I agree, but we don't have a human resource.
Well, we, that, we can take care of that. I mean, we get a human resource person, you know, but the personnel committee, because here's the issue I have. If a teacher, another teacher cannot determine a discipline for one of her peers, that's not fair in no way. So I, to have someone that I work with determine my punishment or whatever the consequences, how is that fair?
I can't disagree, but what we were given to work with does not include a human resources director. So we cannot make changes until y'all get a human resource.
Yeah, and that's something we can work towards, because if I'm not mistaken, it was budgeted for a human resource person.
You look in this direction?
Well, it wasn't budgeted, it was budgeted for a human resource person.
The year before it was, yes.
It's not in this budget right now?
Oh, cool. Is that...
Yeah.
Yeah, he's right, by him, I'm pretty sure we left that out.
Again, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm working with what y'all gave us to work with. And there was no stipulation anywhere in there, so that's why we're discussing that. Okay, on page twenty-four, we've covered that. On page twenty-five, we kind of questioned why the council would be the ones we approached with a new year-end employee after their half of probation, while the council would want to sit there and determine whether they continue employment with the city or not.
You think it should be?
Well, I think it should be the department head. If the department head is doing the evaluation of the employee and doing all the evaluations, the thirty, the sixteen, I mean, the sixteen, the hundred and twenty...
So here's the thing, when you look at this, it's not that we want everything, oh, we want to have our hands in everything, but do we want to know what's going on? We do.
Yes, but, but this is saying the council.
That you will do it.
That you will do it. That's what we're, I agree you need to know.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not debating that, but the way it's written up here, it says the council will do all employee evaluations. The council will determine at the end of probation if that employee will be continued employment here. And that's what we're questioning, do y'all want that much involvement down to that point? Because I don't understand how you could review an evaluation of an employee that you've never seen. We're just questioning the validity of that and how it would work. Because we're the ones that's going to have to implement this.
Maybe the council needs to be given a copy of the progress report, or the recommendation.
That's no problem, you know, that's no problem. It's just, this is what we were given to work with, and this is what we're trying to hash out and understand how we, how we implement it. Okay? And then moving on to page twenty-seven. We were curious about the verbiage under disciplinary actions, and one of them says after it's signed and dated by the employee, and then the next one doesn't need a date and sign. If it needs to be signed and dated in one case, it needs to be signed and dated in both cases of admonishment. So that's just a verbiage issue there.
Hey, Gary?
But we did pick up on it.
Can I ask you a question? In the past, when I've had to do, use this, sometimes an employee, if they disagree with you, they will not sign that portion of the paper, and I have just said...
We'll, we'll deal with that when we get to this employee.
Okay.
Let's try to stay on track with what we're doing here. Okay? So, again, in the twenty-seven, under disciplinary actions, what we'd like for the council and the mayor to consider is making an addition in there is to give the supervisors the ability to send someone home with pay to remove them from the job, prevent further issues. And that's, that's not covered in the employee manual. What that is, if you have an employee that has caused an issue that they know they're going to get disciplined for, and it could cost them their job, we don't need them to continue to be on our job site while we're waiting for the council to convene, or somebody, the mayor, to decide, make a decision. That employee can, is a lot of liability to the city to keep them on the job site if they know their ship is sunk. We need the ability to send them home with pay until we can get it straightened out. Because one disgruntled employee that knows they're going to be fired can put the city in a lot of legal battles, and cause a lot of damage, and plus cause a lot of discord with other employees. So we would like that to be added into this place on the disciplinary actions to give the, because that, that's something we would like to entertain, okay? And then on page twenty-eight, we discussed earlier the appeal process. If we don't have the personnel committee in, it gives the regular city employees one process, civil service still has two processes they go through, and they also have the civil service board to go through, then the council, whereas we only have, as this is presented, one. So that, that was one thing we wanted to bring. And then page twenty-nine, also again, the appeal process and what we're going to come up with on that. Okay? The rest of it, that's civil service, police, so it didn't concern us. Okay, on page thirty-one, on the accidents and all, the way it's presented here, we need to get a little better terminology and definition on a vehicle accident and damage to rolling stock. With this, it has you appearing before before the council, which would be an open council meeting. If I was, had an employee on a tractor with a bush hog, and they were cutting a right away, and it was grown up, and they hit a gas meter and damaged the gas meter, that's just an example, that employee following this guideline would have to come before the council at a regular council meeting because they, they had damage to rolling stock. That's something we need to, we need to kind of look into a little deeper and get some definitions.
You don't think they should be in the public for their offense?
No.
Okay.
No, not for something minor.
Right.
You know, and again, we're going to address, it also isn't covered in here, I'm going to skip forward a little bit, if in fact it does go this route and they do have to address the council, I think it needs to be in the handbook, educating the employee that they do have the right to executive section. And I think the council should be giving them fair warning that they do have that right, if in fact they do. Because a lot of this, they might not, I know I wouldn't want to discuss my personal...
Well, anytime an employee comes up for a discussion, or even a candidate, you have to go into executive section, you say...
Well, it's not covered in the employee manual.
But you've got to give them a twenty-four hour notice if that might happen, you can't just spring it on them like...
And when it comes up as personnel, when we have our workshops, then they will be given a notice.
Right, and so that wasn't included in the handbook, and if in fact we do go that route, I think it needs to be, because we need to educate the employees as to what their rights are on something like that.
Well, each employee gets a handbook, don't they?
Yes, sir, but that doesn't mean they comprehend.
That don't mean they read it.
I mean, have you read our employee handbook? You've been here twelve years, you know, so, so I'm just saying, you know, it's our responsibility as department heads to make sure they are educated. You know, that's part of my disciplinary practice, is I first, I counsel someone, because I have to assume that they didn't have the ability to comprehend what they did wrong. So I take that section out of the employee manual, I sit down, I counsel them, explain what they did wrong, show them, give them a copy of, of what they did wrong. And so the next time they do it, I know it was intentional, they can't say, I did not know. So that's part of my process.
Did I bring up a point? My full-time employees get this particular missing, my part-time is going to just, so I would extend the part-time to make sure the full-time employees match, that's just one question. Got it? It's different.
At any time, the supervisor, you go over the employee manual when a person is hired?
No.
No. I give it to them, they sign.
There's no type of orientation when they hire?
The full-timers used to get it up here. I did. Now I don't know what to do.
We discussed basic what is accepted and not, but the liability falls upon them to read it. But if I see we're having an issue come up, I'll give an example, if someone starts showing up late for work, maybe they don't know they're not supposed to be late for work, I don't know. So it's my job as a supervisor to bring that employee in, counsel them, and say, you realize our work hours start at six-thirty a.m., you're expected to be on the job at six-thirty a.m. Well, you know, I thought, well, so-and-so, they come in at seven. Well, that's okay, you can transfer to their department, but in this department, you have to be at work. So you have to assume, to be fair to everybody, that they don't realize. So you counsel them and explain to them and give them a copy of being tardy in the other handbook.
So when you counsel them, do you have them sign off, sign and date?
Not on the council, I do not have them sign. I give them a copy, and then I write a documentation for their folder that on this day, I counseled them and gave them a copy. Because that's the very minimum, so no, I do not have them sign.
So that's like a warning?
No, that's a counseling.
That's verbal.
So, okay, so this is, so this is what I'm getting at, whenever employees come to you. So if they never have an issue, you never have a discussion or counsel with them. So I guess my thing would be, whenever someone, you have a new employee, then that should be taken care of on the front end.
Orientation.
Orientation, that should be taken care of on the front end, let them sign and date so that would eliminate...
That's, that's what they do. When they're, when they're employed here, when they come on board, they receive a copy of the employee manual. And there's a first page on there, they sign, document that they received that manual, and they will read it and adhere to it, okay? And when they sign it, it's turned in, does it go to you, Martha?
It goes to their personnel folder.
And goes in their personnel folder, that they received it. I'm not going to babysit a grown person and make sure they read every page and give them a test on it. So they, some of the liability occurs on them, because every, and they always can come to their supervisor if they have a question concerning anything, and it's answered.
Okay, so it's not about them, I understand that.
Yes, ma'am.
But for your department specifically, whatever the criteria, whatever the rules are for your department, do you have something saying, hey, you with this department, this is the time you report, that they sign off on?
No, ma'am, I should, they, if I have to explain to them what...
So I guess my thing would be, whenever someone is, you have a new employee, then that should be taken care of on the front end.
Orientation.
Orientation, that should be taken care of on the front end, let them sign and date so they would eliminate.
That's what they do. When they're get, when their employee here, when they come on board, they receive a copy of the employee manual. And there's a first page on there, they sign, document that they received that manual and they will read it and adhere to it. Okay, and when they sign it, it's turned in, it, does it go to you Martha?
It goes to their personnel folder.
And goes in their personnel folder that they received it. I'm not gonna babysit a grown person and make sure they read every page and give them a test on it. So they, some of the liability occurs on them, 'cause every, and, and they always can come to their supervisor if they have a question concerning anything and it's answered.
Okay, so it's not about them, I understand that.
Yes ma'am.
But for your department specifically, whatever the criteria, whatever the rules are for your department, do you have something saying, hey, you with this department, this is the time you report, that they sign off on?
No ma'am, I should, they, if I have to explain to them what, if I tell them their work hours are six-thirty to three and they think they can come in to seven, that's a whole different problem.
Okay, so I'm still saying, if you told them that their work hours are six-thirty to three, do you have anything that you have them sign saying this is my work hours?
No ma'am, I should, if I have to do that, they won't make it in my department. I, I, I'm not being, but I'm just saying, if I can't verbalize, say, okay, you're hired, our work hours are this, if they have to sign something, do they understand it, they're not gonna comprehend our, our job. That's, that's my opinion.
It's, I don't, but I guess we're looking at it differently because I, I don't see it as them comprehending. That's just them being made aware of what they have to do, what time they ought to report, what time their lunch break is, if they're clocking in. You know, those things like that, because it's different for every department, so.
That's correct.
That's, that's not, you know, saying that they can't comprehend, this is just saying, hey, I've given you everything, I told you everything that you need to know. So you agree before you start this job, that's it.
Well, that comes back to, we don't have a human resources department, if we did, they'd do an orientation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if we're gonna have to find somebody to do an orientation.
But we don't, so we have to play the cards we're dealing with.
Yeah, I, I see what Tori can say, what it would do, it would probably help you out too. It'd give you some more leverage when they're conventionally late and come in and say, you know what? We talked about this when you were hired and this is, you signed this saying you know you're supposed to be at six-thirty.
Well, that's why I do the counseling, because ninety-nine percent of your employees, you're not gonna have this problem. So, but, for that one percent, I, I address it as soon as it happens, so.
Who gives the employee a handbook?
Jane does, one way, when it crosses for, through payroll, that's when they get it done.
So there's nobody there can go through orientation with? That's my mother's job, it's good.
I don't have time to go.
I know you don't, I know you don't.
But I don't have it.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, sorry.
In, in, in my department, when they get there from Miss Jane and when they sign off on it and I sign off on it, I asked them specifically, right in there, I said, hey, do you have any questions about this? And sometimes they'll say yes, sometimes they'll say no, but I also allow them to say, if you do, in the future, you can come back and ask me and we'll sit down and discuss it. So, but none, never, you know.
So when they're given this manual, they go to work that day?
Most of the time, yes.
They don't have time to read it?
Yeah, most time when they get processed, some, sometimes, sometimes not.
That's what I'm saying, they don't have the time.
But I, I allow them that option, to, if you have a question or, or something that you do have a, you know.
But you know, here again, if you're a new employee, really what questions will you have? You don't know what questions to ask because you're new.
Right.
So you know, you have to work a few weeks or days or whatever and then you may have some questions, but initially coming in, you're new, so you don't know what questions to ask.
That's, that's why I say, I let them on down the road, I say, you know, hey, if you got anything, just let me know and we'll sit down and discuss it.
But, so even if they get the employee manual that day and they start work that day, just like Mr. Bradford said, they don't have time. So we're not asking you all to reinvent the wheel or do anything, but it varies from department to department, what time they start, what time they get off. You know, you have things that are specific for your department, so if you had just like, just a one pager, you know, with the time that they start, with everything that they need to know for your department that's pertinent to your department and you let them sign off on, so they know before they start that these are the requirements and what you, the expectations. So it's not, you know, a whole lot, asking them to do a whole lot.
In any way possible, we can have a, a video orientation with all this equipment we got.
We could do a video orientation, I'd say, well, that would be a problem, but who would you like to do that? Me, I can do that, that's not a problem.
I mean, that would be.
And just keep in mind, I'm not gonna put them to sleep and do a forty-five minute video, but it's, it's gonna be easy. But since you opened the door and I, I'm speaking about it, I've been in, uh, business in my product sector for thirty-five years and if they can't comprehend that they're supposed to be at work six-thirty, they're gone after a week, you know. But, but sure, I, I, I can do a video and tell them, you know.
Do a video maybe of, pull out certain points in the handbook, like you said, they're not gonna read it.
Yeah.
If they go to work that same day, they may read it that night, they may not.
Yeah, yeah, my, my point is, can we have something addressing the part-time as well as the full-time, is when you do, do the manual? Because it's a little ambiguous now, you know, one, it's gonna, or just not get a manual. Yeah, if you're gonna do a manual, can you put something in there about how it affects the part-timers, 'cause it's totally different than full-time? They have no appeal process?
She says they get a handbook too, but if you're talking about the process.
No, no, okay, you have to do that yourself in your department, in my experience.
So they don't get a handbook in the department?
The full-time, I'm just telling you what I know.
Yes sir.
My full-timers get the handbook.
Yes sir.
They get the sheet, we go over everything, we both sign off. I have, my part-time, we get BDCC people, they ain't signing nothing, I mean, they just come to work.
You, you process your own part-time?
No, no, I know, that's my point.
I can't answer what's happening in the room.
No, 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 I'm not saying, no, we're not gonna get into that, I'm saying, can you please address that also? I'm saying it very kindly, please, because in my experience, it's not addressed in the handbook currently, for part-time.
Do they sign up when they get a handbook?
Part-time employees that are processed up here through payroll, need a handbook. The recreation department processes their own part-time employees, I do not know what happens down there.
Y'all got to realize, probably seventy-five percent of our employees could tell you where their handbook is once they get it.
Right.
So, so we're kinda, we, we gotta follow it, you know, that's why we, we've kinda found what works with the counseling and all and, and going through all that, because they just want a job, come to work. And if they got a problem, they come to my foreman or, or one of the other workers and say, hey, what do y'all do in this case? And if they can't answer them, then they come on up internally. So, you know, so that, that's, I know we gotta have one and some people can quote verbatim everything in here if they're trying to beat the system, that they all of a sudden can't remember what's not in their favor. But majority of the employees, I say, don't even know where theirs is that's, that's been here for a while, but we, we can address that. Uh, next thing we had was on page thirty-four. Okay, on page thirty-four, the last time the, the employee manual, the supervisor's employees we've had revised was on April of twenty-nineteen, and I have the, that copy in this page, y'all's page thirty-four given to us in the same as what we have. So I think that needs to be addressed, what happened there? Under, under new employees.
You didn't get it, that one, you get old one?
No, no one that works for the city and, and the public works department has.
That hasn't gone through anywhere, through personnel or council.
But. Page thirty-four.
They haven't been approved.
Everything with registration, damn.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
It's not in the April handbook.
I understand, but we don't have.
I'm sorry, I'm just saying, I've got a handbook and the same is in my handbook, I'm saying.
Someone changed it without giving it to those employees.
Key, we, we didn't have.
Here's, here's, here's the page thirty-four, they got it put in y'all's, but not in the employee and department handbook.
I don't know. When did that happen?
We don't know, uh, April, April, April one, twenty-nineteen.
How you do that, Nick?
Yeah, we, we haven't, we haven't discussed.
I mean, I've, I've got the same thing in both books.
Can I see yours?
Yes ma'am.
You can just give me the page.
I'm gonna keep it in the book. Cause I've got forty years of changes, I don't, I don't lose nothing.
Do you remember this one at all?
Well, when the books revised, all the supervisors were questioning the revisions to change the schedule out in the book.
But I mean, we don't remember when that happened.
I have to go back and research it.
We did it on April nineteen.
Yeah, April.
Make one for personnel.
Well, the only change that should have been made that we approved was dealing with the personnel committee, the hiring with civil service employees, we didn't, we didn't approve anything else, so that's, that's just, you know.
So, I, I.
We didn't get it, that's what we're saying, we didn't get this, I'm just wondering, when did y'all, when did y'all do this?
I have to go back and research it.
We had to approve it, we brought it out.
But you know, what criteria, we got, we got.
We were going through the book, this is what we found.
So that means that they, I don't think any of the pages have been changed.
I understand, that's why we're bringing, cause apparently no one has noticed, cause we didn't know.
So somewhere before that is when that happened.
That's when we found it.
Okay, yeah.
Pam, you're saying you have this page?
Well, I have that page and we got these books when we were sworn in, January one of nineteen, and that was already in that book.
We don't.
But the employees had it, got a new book, April of two thousand nineteen.
And it wasn't in there.
The same thing has been for the past.
Okay.
Three revisions.
Okay.
What, I think what Pam's saying, it was, when everybody came in, this is what was there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's what they were given.
I mean, yeah.
That's what was on our desk when we got here.
That's what I have in my book.
I'll have it checked out.
So I think it happened prior to.
I think there's an error in y'all's copy.
Okay, so, page, page thirty-five.
Well, we definitely gonna blow it out right now.
Well, we don't know what happened.
We need to find out when, when it's forty times.
It needs to be addressed.
It needs to be noted.
Again, uh, on page thirty-five, the promotion, under promotions, it doesn't match what we have.
What do you have? Mayor or the personnel committee?
It's not even the same, it's not even page thirty-five here, under promotions. It doesn't even exist, under, what we have on promotion says, a newly promoted employee shall be compensated a step in the approved range, which would provide an increase in pay over the received in the previous range. Said pay increase be administratively determined by the department heads and the mayor. A promoted employee may receive step increases after the first year and the second year based on his work performance with the recommendation of his department head and approval of mayor. Okay, right here, it says, promoted employee may receive step raises after the first and second year, maximum one step per year, based on it. We don't have the maximum one step per year, it's not covered.
Okay.
Now, in the past, we were always told that we could give up to two steps. If, one step if they're mediocre, two step if they're, uh, really good employee. But un, under here, that's another thing we found, there was a discrepancy in, in, in between the two.
You're saying it's not in your handbook, it's not in it?
No, and, and in the past, we'd always done, uh, two steps. If they were, if we could justify, if they, if we had a good progress report, they were a really good employee, we could justify two steps of documentation if they were good. Where in, in the one we were given the other day, it spells out a maximum of one step.
And in your book, does it say maximum?
No ma'am, no ma'am, it's, it's kinda.
Okay, because see there again, that was in there.
Right, so we were just.
Yeah, that's fine, we need clarification.
And, and also on page thirty-five, uh, the, the timeframe, uh, if the council has to approve this, uh, that's gonna be kind of a time constraint because we're gonna have to get them out earlier because it has to be on payroll, so for the count, if the council's gonna approve, which that's what the market changes are, if they're gonna prove it, it has to be done in a timely manner to where when this person's anniversary date comes up and they're eligible, it's on that payroll instead of waiting three weeks later till the council can get together and that employee has been not given his duly earned pay raise for three weeks because the council couldn't get a meeting together. So that, that's just some of the things we wanted to discuss, to, to look into.
Let me add something. If that, that happens like that, where they do a, their raise, uh, on their annual date and the council doesn't meet for three weeks, will they ever see back pay for the time that they're in? That's what I'm saying, I just wanted to add.
Richard Reddick, Gartner.
They would.
That should, that should not be, that should not happen, they should not have to wait three days.
Right, I agree, I'm not saying that, I'm not, I'm not gonna know that. If you had a case like that.
Okay, so that, that was one of the things we wanted to address on page thirty-five. Okay, now on our manual, it isn't covered in what y'all have on these changes. On page thirty-six of our manual, I guess y'all took the same, and what I'm gonna do on the on-call policy. Number five.
No, y'all don't, y'all don't have it because it wasn't following that.
If y'all don't have, y'all need those employee manuals.
This is only for me.
I don't know what mine is.
Okay, okay, I'll read it out, on number five, on our on-call policy, all on-call personnel will be scheduled for a seven consecutive day period. The on-call work week is defined as Thursday of one week at four oh one P.M. through Thursday of the following week at six fifty-nine a.m. Okay, we have varying work hours throughout the city in different departments. What we would like to suggest is to change that verbiage from four oh one to six fifty-nine, change to normal work hours for your department. Because you might have some people that come to work at six o'clock, some departments come at six-thirty, some at seven, some at eight. So instead of defining that, 'cause it's different for every department, we would like to look into changing the definitive time to normal daily work hours.
Would I only do that on page?
Number five.
Number five on the, it won't be in the.
I know we don't have it, yeah.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Number five.
That, that, we just, we went through what Councilwoman Walker did and then we went through the entire, with things that we wanted to talk about, okay?
And that would be per department, depending on what those departments.
Yeah, and, and if you put the verbiage of normal work hours or, or, you know, you're not defined.
It would apply to each.
Yeah, cause again, if you got an employee that uses their handbook for their benefit, they can say, well, it says here, six fifty-nine and they're supposed to be at my, my work at six a.m., then they, you know, so we're just trying to head off problems.
But the on-call work week is mine, but that's starting at that Thursday, Thursday.
Yes ma'am, that's our, that's our, that's our pay period, that's the way we do it there. So it'd be, it'd be, uh, you'd start your normal work hour, the beginning of the pay period on Thursday and end your normal quitting time the following Wednesday. Well, actually, it's, it'd be Thursday, one minute before when it would end. So, anyway, we just would like that looked into. Yes ma'am, okay, and then on again, our page thirty-nine, y'all won't have it in the markups. What we would like to propose is, is time and a half, okay, on overtime. And currently, the way it reads is, if you perform overtime work, you will be paid one and a half times your regular hourly wage for any time over forty hours per week that you work. The city amendments legal holidays, including your birthday, will be counted as a day work during the work week. Vacation time and sick leave will not be counted as a day work during the work week. Okay, what we would like to propose is to change the verbiage of that because there's some instances that aren't covered in here and some that are. We would like to change the verbiage to, the city amendments legal holidays, including your birthday, vacation and jury duty will be counted as a day work during the work week. Sick leave will not be counted as a day work during the work week. And if y'all bear with me, I'll, I'll explain what we're, what we're discussing with this. If, way it's set up now, if I get called to jury duty, which I have no control over and I go and have to serve on the petit jury for two days, okay? That's excused time, and, and, you know, and I, but if I go Monday and Tuesday and serve on the petit jury and come back to work Wednesday and Wednesday night, we have a storm and, and I work all night, I don't get overtime because I didn't work forty hours over something that wasn't my control. I get straight time, but not time and a half. Mr. Beard's working right beside me, he didn't get called petit jury. We're doing the same job at the same pay, he's getting time and a half, I'm getting straight time. There's no call to my own. So, and then for vacation time, we discussed it. I feel like vacation time should be counted as time work. And my reasoning for that is, we're giving vacation time that we earn, okay? We are mandated to take that time or lose it, okay? We accrued that time during time where we worked forty hours. But when we take it, we have to take it or lose it, we're forced to take it or lose it. And if you, if you're on call, there's only certain times you can take, and if you're like we are now, departments are strapped and shorthanded, so you have to take your time off or you lose it. So if I take Friday off, vacation, planned two weeks ahead and everything good, I take Friday off. We have a tornado come through this weekend, I don't get time and a half till I've worked eight hours because I took a day's vacation during that pay period, that I had to take or lose. So, and that's time that you earn working a forty hour week. So we would like to consider, y'all to consider adding vacation time days to count as your forty days, forty hours work week. Because you can't put a definitive cost on if it'll cost more or we save money or not because you don't know, there's no mathematician can put a definitive cost on savings or loss. Because if I didn't take a vacation day, then me and Keith are making the same rate of pay, we're both getting time and a half. But if I did take a vacation day, which you don't know what's gonna happen. So, and we're working as short, I'm four men short right now, so, I mean, if you get people to come to work after hours, it's special because now, there is, you can't fault the person for not answering their phone if they know they're gonna have to come out working straight time because they took a day's vacation.
And that's rare that that happens, but it does.
Right, it's rare that it happens, but it happens enough to where it does, it needs to be addressed.
Well, that's several months it hasn't been rare, it's been, it's been a while.
Some of the storms that we've had, sure.
Yeah.
And as short as you are, people are taking vacations, sir.
Right, and I do have, I do have people that have been on vacation and come out and work the night that they're on vacation. And they don't do it for the, you, they don't do it for you, they don't do it for the city, they do it for the people they work with because they know it could be them needing help next year. So, I, I don't think that's too much to ask for, to consider that.
I've got a question about the jury duty.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I don't know who to address, Mr. Walker. Are those checks sent to the city when they're on jury duty?
No.
Checks they receive?
No, it's always been the city's policy that the employee gets to keep that money plus the pay that they receive for, you know, for their day's pay. We don't, we don't collect a jury check from them.
It's standard in the industry.
Yeah, and we're not, it's what, twenty something dollars? It's not a lot.
If they're gonna get paid for their day, they're supposed to turn those checks in.
I've never.
They need to prove, Mr. Walker. I don't know, man.
I've never heard that on jury duty.
I'm happy.
No, I would be against that.
It isn't like they're getting there on a joyful vacation.
You know how long it takes to get there.
It isn't like they're on a joyful vacation. Okay, that's one, that's the proposal we had on that. And if you'll turn to page fifty one on the regular handbook, yes, I'll read it for y'all to come here. What we talked about, and we've had this issue come up on bereavement leave. On bereavement leave, the city allows you up to three days for an in-state funeral and bereavement. As of now, it's three consecutive days. What we would like for y'all to entertain is the ability to split the days if necessary, as long as it's done with this seven day period. By that, what I mean, if you have a catastrophic problem, Monday, your mom dies. You're gonna be off that day Monday. It's gonna be Wednesday perhaps before your siblings can get to town and y'all can get to the funeral home, make arrangements. It's not far-fetched for you to come back to work Tuesday to get something done and get caught up because there's nothing you can do until your siblings get to town Wednesday. Take off Wednesday, funeral's Friday, come back to work Thursday. And this is just a scenario. And I think it should be, if it's allowed to be split, it should be done in a seven day period. Because you don't, you wanna put a short time constraint where you are being compassionate and the employees say, is trying to be a good employee and work when they can, but you also don't want to get abused. If you go, if you don't put the seven day constraint on it, they can take two days for Uncle Joe's funeral and then two months from now say, oh, I need to take my third day because we're gonna have a get-together, you know? Well, that's abuse there. So I think, I think it would help if y'all would consider something like that. And then on page seventy two, there was a discrepancy on our pages being the same.
What is it, what's the topic?
Uh, problem solving procedure.
Okay.
It's just, our page wasn't updated with what, what was right here.
Gary, have you got, you haven't had a copy of ours to compare with yours to make sure that there's any more pages that are not.
Not a total, all we have is what Councilwoman Walker had gotten and marked up on, which is what we have here. No ma'am, we don't have them.
Okay, see, even I was under the impression that you got the entire manual because you gave them out while we were out of time, correct?
I just did the red line, thank you.
Okay, see, I was under the impression that you had the entire manual and so that's why I requested a copy of what you brought out to make sure it was.
Right, so those are just some discrepancies that we found. Okay, we had talked earlier about the employee warning report. And I have one here and I would pass them out, but I just brought the one with me. If you follow this, it pretty much covers what's going on. And it has a place for your statement, the time, date, warning, and all the employee's name. And then it has a place for the employee's statement to check off whether they concur with the statement or disagree. And they have a brief area to, they don't write a book in there to say that they disagree or whatever and then sign off on it. Okay, and at that time, it's split up. And it'll tell you, the original comes from Ms. Wanda for their personnel file. The yellow canary part, it goes to the employee. And then the pink one goes in my file for them, or vice versa. If you wanna be kind of intimidating, you can give them the pink one, so they got the pink slip, you know? So, anything beyond where I counsel, I use one of these. And if it's a verbal warning and I think it's just a hiccup, they had a bad day or whatever, I will go ahead and do it, give them their copy, put my copy in their folder in my drawer and not give them one in their permanent record. But they got a copy of a verbal, you know? If I think they just had a hiccup, if I see it's a pattern, then I'll move forward with doing something a little more stern. But we do have, I think this pretty much covers us and I think y'all had discussed earlier in one of the other meetings about them signing, that they got something and all, and this covers it. And what I have done, I've had one case where the employee refused to sign, and that's okay, they did. What I did is I called in a witness and documented that the employee did refuse to sign and I made all efforts to stress the importance of them signing. And if they didn't sign, they didn't get a copy. Even though they demanded a copy, well, in order to get a copy, you sign it that you got it and either agree or disagree. So you can't have a cake and eat it too.
Well, our department heads following the same procedures you.
They should, basically, I mean, that's following these guidelines, you know? I can't.
You know, if there's a hiccup, you know, calling me and I'm doing the same thing.
Right, I, I think, in public works, we're all on the same page, pretty much.
I'm pretty much kind of in-house, what stays there, what happens stays there. Sometimes, most of the time, when I sign and talk with them, you know, I put it in my personal diary. I'm kind of like, oh, it just depends on if they just had a bad day or something, you know, nine, ten, eleven. If they do something continuously, I have a little thing that I do that I give them some chances. If they do it that third time, then that's when it's gonna get serious. That's just means, I mean.
If we have to bring this out, they back to that.
Yeah, that's when I get to that point, it becomes serious, you know?
It was the same.
Yeah, but to protect ourselves, one thing that we've started doing is keeping a log of everything.
Okay.
So let's say you do have that hiccup, I record the hiccup even though I don't do the warning report. Now, after that, yeah, we do do the warning reports and I, no matter what we do, we have a policy that we have a witness in the room when we're talking about the discipline, when we're doing the warning report, because people can say anything.
Yeah.
So we always, we've made a policy of that, yeah, we log out everything.
Yeah, again, we're dealing with humans, you know? We can't be so strict and by the book and still not have some compassion.
Yeah.
You know, we all have bad days, we all make mistakes, we all let our feelings get the best of us sometimes. So that's why, one of the things we wanted to talk about is adding the ability to send an employee home with pay because a lot of times, that can be the difference between.
A lawsuit and.
Well, losing a good employee. Because if I leave them on the job, maybe me and you gonna end up, we're already cross at each other. We end up getting in a fight and I have to fire both of you. Where if I can get the problem home, cooler heads prevail. If they can put their head on the pillow and come back the next day, they might not like it, but they'd get along. So, you know, I don't think it's a thing we'd have to use very often, but I think it would be a good tool to have in our toolbox to keep good employees because good employees make mistakes, you know? And I'm all about giving chances, you know? And like I said, sometimes we let our feelings get the best of us and our temper get the best of us when if we, we get them off there, cool down. And it's different, sometimes get them out there so they don't cause more harm or put us under more liability. But I think it's a good tool to have to, for the human aspect of dealing with employees. If y'all take that into consideration also. Mr. Taylor, this is some of the proposals that we had discussed and it kind of went page to page. And other than strictly going by that, we kind of got to bring it to speed. That's all I have, ladies and gentlemen, if I have any questions, concerns.
Anyone else, or you all kind of collaborated and came.
Public works, yes ma'am.
There's one thing I would like to pre-offer to consider as a possibility, and that is using a temp agency for hiring people. Because with a temp agency, you can get in quickly and you can see how well we do and you can make your decision later. And I've worked with temp agencies before in the past and it worked very well. And so I'd just like to have that option.
Now, that's a good idea.
You have some lists that seem like.
A gentleman has, a gentleman has.
He answered.
Well, I think I got the answer on, it was on the signature part of it, it's pretty much the same. But I do have a question. Have we looked at our application process, the form that we, that they fill out? Because I don't know, I haven't been able to find the answer myself, but I've been told by other people that some of the questions that we ask on there are actually not legal to be asked.
Our application is very dated, it's very obsolete. There are some things that we should require on there that we're not required. And that's gonna be part of the handbook when I turn it over for inspection, to make sure all the state laws are there and everything is correct for a new employee application.
I mean, I'm not complaining, I just want us to be legally correct if we're gonna do this.
You're correct, and we discussed that in one of the meetings earlier.
If it was developed twenty-five or thirty, thirty-five years, there's lots of changes as far as what you can, you know, with that belongs and everything else, what you can ask.
It's very obsolete, yeah.
I know even in my years in school system, from the time I started, when I was asked on my applications, as opposed to what we could ask thirty years later, it changed.
Yeah.
As far as, because you have children, I mean, lots of things, you couldn't ask that you can, you know, can ask and answer.
And within the new application, I believe that we should e-verify employees. If we e-verify employees, that means we know they're citizens of the United States and that type of thing.
Also, the application needs to be made available online. They need to do it online.
Mayor, council members, that's all I had. I appreciate y'all's time, I appreciate y'all's consideration to consider these proposals. If you have any questions, I'm available.
All right, thanks.
Miss Walker, do you have anything else?
I was just looking at the application, some people have been writing down.
Um, excuse me, I was in class, I have class on Mondays and Saturdays, but.
You what now?
I'm in the resource department.
What about them?
Are we any close to like making that position available?
Well, we took, we took the HR position as a budget, remember, to balance the budget.
I think, honestly, I think the research will be a lot of the problems that we're having.
I agree too, and if we could get seventy, eighty thousand dollars in the budget, we could get us a HR director.
Well, we did look at economic of.
We did. But we'd have to get council approval to amend the budget and I don't know if we could get that done. Do we have anything from the police department as far as anything in the employee handbook?
One thing I want to touch base about is the making the body cam. A class three offense, if me and Mr. Taylor, if we have a park path cross on the street and I've got my body camera on, and me and Mr. Taylor somehow or another, for some whatever reason, get into it and that body camera is held on their chest by a magnet or a clip, and that body camera gets knocked off. And then after I arrest him or after I let him go, he decides to file a complaint against me. And the way this, adding this body cam as a class three offense violation, if it's not recorded, is all he's gotta do is complain to the council and then that's, then I'm subject to the class. Uh, I think that's a little harsh. When we first went to the body cameras, when we first got our chief body cameras, you know, I wrote a policy in reference to when those cameras are be turned on and when they're not, necessarily don't have to be turned on. And we're kind of limited because of the batteries live on those cameras. The first camera will top, give like four to six hours, and then your battery runs out. So my first policy was written that if on the traffic stop and that car camera is rolling, then that officer doesn't necessarily, didn't necessarily need to turn that body cam on. Now, with these new cameras that are ordered, that's the ones that y'all have approved. Now, with these new cameras that, that are ordered, that, that's the ones that y'all have approved, we haven't got many yet, that the, the battery life on them is, is a lot longer, so what I want to do is rewrite, I'm not saying not make it an offense, but a class three offense where termination, if, if the outcome.
Is that the, the class three, first, first time it's termination?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I'm gonna rewrite the policy on these new cameras once we get them all in, and everybody gets it on, to make it a lot more straightforward. These guys, believe it or not, these guys like these cameras, you know, I mean, they're, 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 they're all excited about it, they're all wanting the new ones, for, you know, I had six from last budget that we have gotten in, six new ones, but the fifteen that y'all approved on this budget have not come in yet.
Have they been audited yet?
Yes, they are. Uh, and, 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 and second of all, is that body cam footage, in a lot of time in a criminal case, is, is evidence. And that, that's something that just can't be put out to anybody. Uh, I'm not saying that, that I, I will refuse to show it to somebody as far as the council does, but to, just to put it out because it is evidence, and, and, and Mr. Minfield has verified that. It's just like any other piece of evidence, it's not, it's not a matter of public record.
You want to add a few with your chain of evidence, if you go to court, with a good attorney here to go it out?
Yeah.
So my question is.
So they shouldn't be looking at anything, really, by law. I mean, I'm a former cop retired, just commenting.
My question is as far as with that, I don't, I feel as though class three is a little extensive, but you would see if the camera had, was knocked off and hit the floor, because on.
Oh, yes.
All the time they exit the vehicle.
You're exactly right.
You would actually notice.
Yeah, you're gonna know whether it was on or off.
Yeah. So, I mean, yeah, class three is a little extreme, but there needs to be.
Some accountability. I agree.
And families should not have it on when they exit the vehicle, so therefore, it's not the officer's word against the.
Exactly.
And that was the purpose of kind of pushing issue with that, so that being said, I mean, you know, first time is, you know, automatic write-up, not a verbal, but I would feel like it should be a write-up, and then, you know, second time, maybe home without pay, the third time should be termination.
I agree.
And it should, it should be a process, it shouldn't be automatic termination.
I agree. I, I just want to bring that to y'all, too.
Are you okay with the, uh, hiring process of the police officers, ma'am?
Well, like Mo indicated, you know, the timeframe is, is, it's like, I've, I've had an application submitted up there for, what, a week and a half, and, and still haven't received response on interviewing process. Uh, you know, it's, as bad as we need officers, and they're, they're, just probably fly here, don't, does not mean they're not looking somewhere else. And the timeframe, uh, sure, like, is, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, and y'all know I don't have a problem with it, it's just a, you know, want make arrangements to, to get the people together to interview that person.
So you said the first offense, let's go back to it, not getting a class three, your first offense would be a write-up. Write-up.
The second, second step is to be home, you know, with pay, there. See, it has to be a process, we need to.
Class three is not automatic termination.
It's not?
But it's there.
It's there.
It's there.
Yeah, it's there, you can terminate, but it's not automatic.
You gotta rewrite that for us, and let's look at that.
Chief. Okay. Um, and as far as the, uh, the hiring process, maybe we discussed about the, uh, like the six-month review? Was that in there?
No.
No. That was just something that we verbally talked about when we interviewed a candidate, uh, after we interviewed the candidate.
But I also want y'all to understand that, no matter who, if, if I write Keith Beard's ticket, he gonna pull it back, he gonna complain. That's our chief, please wrote me a ticket.
Yeah, cause I.
People. But you, you know, I'm like you would, but nine, nine people out of ten are gonna complain, or, or they're gonna be up there, you know, any time you get somebody back pocket there, I'll say.
Right. You know, that's where the body cam comes in as well.
Exactly.
See, you can review the altercation at the end, think for yourself what it was, you know. A lot of times, you know, the bad is that we give a person the right to, to treat someone any kind of way, and they're all thinking about community relations. It's real big, you know.
Let me ask Mr. Taylor something. About the officer, son, uh, son I was sitting on my porch.
This, this was supposed to be addressed after the meeting.
After the meeting?
Oh, yeah, if you aren't a supervisor, is that what you said, Matt?
Yes, sir.
After the meeting, okay, we're gonna discuss.
We'll have questions at the end.
Oh, okay, okay.
That, that's it, but you know, when we were talking, um, about complaints, just like at one point, it was, well, without saying what we talked about, but you know the situation we talked about involving, um, a police officer. Those kind of things, not someone just complaining about a ticket, you know, the stuff that.
Can we, can we talk about the, uh, interview process that's, that, that? It was designated, Keith and I opted out of the interview process, and so the other three council are supposed to be interviewing the policeman that come up, and it's my understanding that it's not happening on a timely basis. Is there any way that we could put in there that if these candidates are not, uh, interviewed by three of the councilmen, that it goes automatically to city council for approval? Can we put a time restriction on there?
I don't think we need to put it in, that's what happened with the last one.
I'm sorry?
That's what happened with the last candidate, so they came straight to council approval.
Well, they had, they had.
I had verbals from everybody, but you.
Yeah. So what, so just take them automatically to council, after what?
No, I'm saying, you know, we just write that in, because they're gonna come to council anyway.
A lot of times, a lot of times, if we're calling, asking, we want to interview, and I've declined the last two or three to interview, I, I've declined it, so it went, you know, council, they called and asked me, and I just declined the interview. I said, you know, honestly, I just learned the chief's name, that's how, you know, I went with the last two or three.
So you, you and Keith have opted out of interviewing any candidate?
No, the police, we're only.
I'm saying the police candidate, so you all will not ever interview any police candidates, that's what you're saying?
We're taking the chief's recommendation.
That's what I said in the beginning, I'm just gonna, I, you know, unless something comes up, and there's a reason why we need to do it, um, I was just gonna, chief was, I just said this before, you probably saw it once ago, that he was elected by citizens here, and then, and I, I don't know a lot about police work, and police, the way it works, so I was just gonna trust his.
Yeah.
Recommendation, and then if, if it came back to bite us, then we come to you, and it, it's your, you know, you're in hot water, so that's, I was just putting the, the responsibility on him, I was just gonna trust him.
Who would be in hot water if he's elected this far?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but I'm just saying that, uh, if, if, if he recommends this person, I just felt like he should know whether it's a good police officer or not, and I was gonna take this, I was just gonna trust him for that. You know, if, if we come to the point where there's a reason why, should, you know, something happens, and we do, then, then, yeah, then I'm gonna sit back.
The revised statute, the revised statute, just like, he's authorized to hire his police officers. The revised statute said that I'm authorized to hire all employees, including administration staff, with the exception of the city clerk and the city attorney. Now, I, I realize our handbook.
Department head or something like.
No, I, I mean, I, I realize our handbook says department head, but according to the state law, that, that trunked the handbook.
I wanted to, if I could add, I was gonna say something about that, but I, I've been reading, and I know.
I put it in the box.
Yeah, I, I've been reading too, just checking up on things to make sure that we're legal and everything, and that's, I, I, I know our, uh, charter is, is, doesn't speak a lot about some things, and so I did find, I have that, but I read on the Larson Act, it does apply if our charter is silent.
Yeah.
And so in that, in the Larson Act, it does specify some duties of an elected police chief and a mayor. And so that's why I, with some of this in the handbook, we have to be careful, because this handbook's not our charter. This is a guide that we go by, so we have, I, I was gonna say that, I don't know, you know, we, we need to be careful about what we change as far as legally, you know, we're leaving something that by law is in there, and that'd be something Mr. Minfield would need to see, you know, with, cause like I said, our, our charter is, when it comes to duties of the mayor, police chief, and council, it's just like all on one page. There's not a whole lot there, so I agree with you, we need to look at that, because some of that applies, that Larson Act takes over, and state law.
We're still, and I, and, and I believe once everybody gets together and gets the changes they want, that Mr. Minifield reviews it. And then, I still feel like we need to send it over to Neil Urban to review it, because he knows all the state law, and get it reviewed, just to make sure if we're gonna do this, I, I want to do it completely correct.
The question is, why would we pay for another attorney to review it, and we pay Mr. Minifield to represent us, to follow the state law?
Well, I, I understand, but, you know, we want somebody that specializes in this, and, and you used the word we, y'all said that, that the city wasn't gonna pay for it. But I, I have my own money, so I know how to write a check too, so I, I want to make sure it's done correctly.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, that's what, that's what the city hired Mr. Minifield for.
I got it, I understand it, but I'm also gonna send it out to a professional, have it look that as well.
Okay, you said it was in the state statute that it didn't say anything about department head, what statute is it?
I didn't want to put it in the box.
Can I make a statement, please?
Uh.
I'm on it.
Well, you're not even.
I'm not department head, I'm sorry.
You're, you're pretty close to department head.
No.
I'll go right to here.
Yeah, go ahead.
You're, you're an employee, so.
I just wanna make a statement that, and this has been told to me through the years, whether I'm legal or not, you'll have to ask someone. State laws, whether it's wage, um, revised statutes to municipalities or whatever, are the minimum requirement.
Are the minimum?
The minimum requirement.
Correct.
We are special charter first, then the Larson Act, then city ordinances. Everything in this manual right now went through city council as an ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
So what it says, whatever it says, this went through council.
Right.
Y'all approved every change in it, y'all being history.
So basically, city ordinance, so state law is the minimum, so you can add to it, basically.
You can add to it, all you want, by ordinance.
Yeah, but at the same time, would you just understand, the state give you the authority to pass.
Through council.
Slow order.
Through a resolution or ordinance.
How does it?
Or, uh, they went through council, every time.
But not until a resolution or ordinance.
Through ordinances. It was just.
This is, each, each thing that's.
Slowing through ordinances.
That's what the last problem we had, when we have city council. You're not just passing ordinances, there are resolutions that you pass, so I'm sorry. And resolution is one that's qualified in basically in your, your, your ordinance book. The state gives you the opportunity to do that. And when you do that, that becomes the law amendment.
Okay.
Yeah. Cause the, the ordinance passed in street board, maybe entirely different. So each municipality have the right to pass their own rules and regulations, as long as they are not contrary to the state of Louisiana.
Right.
And you can make amendments and all that kind of stuff, by the way.
Yeah.
The Larson Act didn't come into play unless.
Our charter is silent.
Unless the charter and your ordinance are silent, put your revised statute also trunks the charter and everything too.
Well, just, well, what you just said is, we, we just, we can make things stricter, like you said, we just can't do anything that would be against what state law says.
Yeah, it's just like the state can make in the law contrary to the constitution of the United States.
Right, right, exactly.
You know, but you have the right to.
Just have to be in line with them, and then we might, you know, we talked about that with alcohol, where it's, where we can make things a little more strict.
Right. Then make them, yeah, less, yeah.
What do you think about a labor attorney that's drawn up these employee manuals for the city's looking at this? I mean, is that your field of expertise?
That's a good idea.
You know, it depending on what, I'm not gonna say he's not depending on what he is, he is.
You should.
I ain't gonna say that, but I can't see any reason why you had to bring in somebody from offline to write the, uh, employees manual for the city amendment. You was practically doing it in here today, would you know it or not?
Do you know?
That's what, what you think y'all been doing all the time, when you've been sitting there going over the employees manual? And making your own little changes in what? Recommendations. But just cause we made recommendations, we don't know if that was, that was illegal. Yeah, well, you do have books that you can modify on that, you know, but you know, you ain't got to have no expert, I mean, this funny person come in.
Can you say some situations? Right, oh.
See, that's another thing, don't ask me nothing off the top of your head, or make it up for the first time, I can look at it. But a hesitation for a job, you can get something like that off the internet and improve on it. This is not the, it's not rules unless they have you, personal question involving your privacy or something like that. It's just a general form.
Well, that's what we want to.
How many years, uh, education do you have? Have you worked in, in positions involved this particular employment, if you want?
I wouldn't want as much information as I could get that's legal.
I would too.
But I don't know what's legal, because I haven't been trained in this.
Well, he has, that's what I'm trying to figure out, how many years this table got a lawyer?
He's not, he's not trained enough.
I don't, I don't, I don't think he's been trained. I haven't got this training, it's like I haven't, I haven't trained in robbing the law. Before, I didn't study that, you know. But the area that I do know of, I think, I think this group in here can put a job application together without going all the way to hell sent to things.
Plus to street board.
Yeah.
Job application, the paper, the handbook's what's most important.
Well, I think there's some things in that application that are not.
Yeah, we can screen that out, but, uh, you're probably get some things in your job, in your handbook, that you're not gonna agree with yourself. Why don't you take what you got already, and start improving on what you got? Does the fire department have any questions of, of Miss Walker?
No, uh, I'll start with, uh, Mo, we, I went over everything, we agreed on basically everything.
Okay. What about the, uh, parks and recreation job? We do parks and recreation.
Are you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, was the issue with the time clock's brought up for the, um?
Not that, we were kind of hearing from each department what their input was, uh.
I just know they had some questions in Public Works as far as how that, how that, how that's gonna affect them, with them being on call and all, and I just think it should be for myself, is, you know, the office employees, the Public Works, they come out all the time tonight, and everything else to have a call. It's, it's impossible for them to go to the shop, clock in, then go to a call.
And, and the workshops that we've been having, there's gonna be exceptions, that, where they can clock in on, on their iPhones, and, and clock in that way.
iPhones only.
Everybody, I mean, does the city provide their phones?
They have, they have iPhone.
Yeah.
But that's what we're working at, we're, we're still having.
We, we come across a bunch of bots when we tell them.
We're still, we're still making them.
As far as them, it should be some kind of exemption, because like I say, with the weather that's been raining a lot of year, they've been calling out multiple times for different things, it's impossible for them to go to the shop, clock in, and then give the things. What, the iPhone, what kind of legitimacy is there? I mean, I'd say it would be house and clock in.
Okay, can I speak now, just now? It's on the ordinance, it's on the home.
Sure.
I mean, it, it's not, or time clocks are a means of time entry, and if everybody would focus that, on that, that, the problem goes away. A supervisor can sit down and say, John Smith worked from this hour to this hour, and add it manually when he does his whatever call out, or whatever, overtime, or whatever, it's just a means of time entry. We look at it that way, it's gonna go really easily, because it goes straight from there, in payroll. Payroll knows after the supervisor has looked at it and said, yes, this is right, this is right, this is right, it goes in, and it's done.
Have you tried to sell that to the, to the supervisors, cause a lot of.
I know they don't, and I.
They're not on board with that.
I didn't ask for this, but, you know, it was late in my life, and said fix this, and, and that's what I'm trying to do.
Who did ask for this? I most.
Did you ask for this?
I believe that as an IT person, I can add that in time management, you can add groups, specific groups for the police department, specific groups for the fire department, for the utility department, because the fire department and the police department have very specific guidelines that they follow for time entry and payroll, like, I believe eighty-four hours within a two-week period, because they don't work the straight day, they don't shift. So when a supervisor starts talking about, well, my department does this, so we can't put that in there, well, my department, you create individual groups, and then that issue goes away as well.
That is one of the things that I would like to say about um the hiring of police people. Now, I'm not, this doesn't have anything negative to do with you, you understand that, I want you to understand this right up front. But I want you all in here to understand what a police officer is. And I really think that in addition to what the chief give you all, I think you all as a council should have the opportunity to sit down and talk. And have some dialogue with a person that's gonna go out and handle your and take care of your community.
They do have that opportunity.
I know that, but I'm talking to city council, they have the opportunity, and they should they should they should take it.
I agree.
Do we have any other uh questions from the audience?
You feel the city department?
Who uh?
Have, do you all have any questions? Uh I'm really, at first I did have some, I was skeptical about some of the changes. I remember after I heard how Gary presented it, then I agreed with, I don't know the way that he presented.
Backing up here, just uh I just wanna give my two cents with, I really appreciated what uh Gary talked about with personnel committee. And then you had made the statement about uh with teachers, having other teachers evaluate, you didn't feel that was fair. When I was listening to Gary, when he talked about this personnel committee, I took that as that's almost extra protection for the worker, because it is his peers. And I, as a employee, would rather have that protection, say, from a personnel committee than having to go before the the city council. So I think it it from the rec uh Parks and Rec standpoint, I am a little bit worried with the uh hiring process. And waiting for city of council approval and, because y'all have other jobs, and and I appreciate that. And I'm very worried about that that time uh factor, whereas I think the personnel committee, we all work for the city, we're all here every day. We can maybe expediate things, and plus, if there's any discipline or whatever, I do like the idea of the personnel committee. Because I feel like I've got an extra layer of protection, because they are similar employees like I am.
Okay, so, and let me say this too, with the the waiting, the time period. It was never intended for the council to interview every single applicant. So just like with the police officers, you want candidates, one to send us the information. So it would be the same process of for an applicant, you know, you send us the information, if we feel like we want to interview, that's our discretion. If we wanna interview that applicant, but it was never intended for us to interview every single applicant. I have a job, I'm not coming here every day because I can just see an influx of applications. An influx of applications where consuming my time purposely.
Right.
Uh so that was never the intent, it would be our discretion, you know, that was the intent, yeah, that was the intent of it.
I didn't understand that part.
Not for us to take time out of our schedules and interview every single person that completed the application.
I guess I was confused on that.
Well, no, I told you that, when you said, when you made that statement, I said to you, that was never the intent for us to interview every single applicant when it was first presented to you, I said that.
Well, when we when we send, like, when Wanda sends you an application, would you mind responding to us and letting us know one way or the other?
Yeah, I I was huh?
Mystery.
Yeah.
Is it, is it, Charles, I don't know, maybe you can help me out here, um. To get the applications to the council, I can email them, but I make a copy and I blackout social security numbers and driver's license numbers. I'm just afraid for that to be out there, and I don't trust my council, I don't think that I do a thing with it, but who knows where it like ends up? Out there in cyber space. So is that okay to do that with all that other information on there?
I think that's what you're supposed to do.
Okay, that's what I need to do, I just wanna be, I want the okay.
It has. It it has.
But I do need to take out social security numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about birthdays?
Yeah.
Driver's license numbers.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I'll start sending y'all those police officer candidates like that, and y'all can just shoot me back an email and say, looks okay, or I have a problem, I'd like to talk to this person, or whatever you wanna do.
Okay.
We can speed this up.
Well, yeah, and and if we get that done like in twenty-four hours, that'd be great, and that way we won't lose a candidate.
And if you send me a text message and say, hey, check your email, then I will, because I'll be honest, I don't check that email.
Okay.
The council email every day like I check my work email, but if you send me a, shoot me a text message, then I will, you know.
Okay.
Then let let me know that an application is there for me to look at.
And also have another another, call it a statement or a question, whatever, Frank Torrance had brought up a really good point about part timers. And maybe Ms. Martha, you can answer this. I, as a director, am kinda confused about what what governs the part timers, is it the same manual?
We only have one manual.
Okay, so there's not a different set of rules, or everybody is under the same set, part timers as well as?
It's the same, we only have one manual.
Yeah, it's the same, and we actually, you know, we're just hearing from the department heads, we haven't really just gone into an in-depth discussion, because we need to discuss the part-time temporary employee.
Temporary question about temporary.
You know, wages and all of that, so we haven't discussed it yet, we were just getting here in front of the department heads, you know.
Just for your, for the council, as we move forward, the part-time turnover, I know in my department with the number of part timers we have, is very high. And so, and the thing is, we need to hire people real quick.
Okay.
And so I just wanna make sure that part-time hiring process can be handled pretty quickly, I understand the full-time stuff, we need to maybe take a little more time on that, but sometimes I get the part-time.
Yeah, and and all of it, even with the full-time, it could be handled pretty quickly too, once Wanda gets the information, um and she sends it to us, then it's it's really not gonna take that long.
Alright, so my question is, as far as that, like, part-time and temporary, so if temporary doesn't have a time limit on it, that should be permanent, right?
What temporary, part-time?
I mean, temporary, like a temporary employee.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's it's just like a temporary service, you can have them six weeks, six months, a year, ten years.
So that's another way for the mayor, just to go around the council and hire somebody that you don't wanna bring to the council, right?
Well, is that the question you wanna ask me? I can't answer that.
Okay, cause I mean, you know, we have a department head position that came over, and we hired a guy with a temporary status, but there is no end date to his temporary status.
Yeah, we're, I I assume that once the department heads, if they have to leave, you know, once, you know, they say, well, give us their input, that then we could go in depth and discuss this. Without them actually having to stay here if they didn't want to, so we were just kinda hearing from them, because we really hadn't discussed anything, we just heard from.
Oh, you understand what I'm saying right now?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but.
It's like like Mr. Mike's gonna leave, are we gonna hire a temporary city clerk forever?
Well, it depends on if if we haven't finished the the uh audit, if we have to get somebody in here to finish the job, possible.
So what I'm saying is, so we'll hire a temporary city clerk indefinitely?
No, sir.
Nothing's permanent in life, I mean, you know, you can die.
Uh-uh, I I mean, I understand your question, I'm just saying, we haven't, it was my hope that we would go back after we heard from all the department heads. Then we could go through and iron out everything in order so we could make the necessary changes as we go through it, instead of jumping around from here to there.
Oh.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying, I was just trying to make sure we heard from all the department heads, that, you have anything?
I think they've all pretty much covered my concern about it.
Okay, so, alright, so now we can give some.
Well, we need to talk to Mr. Mr. Verdo, do you have anything?
Uh, notes I made, well, I have a page and half of notes, but um most of that's been covered already. Um Mo did outstanding job with that, I just wanna echo uh that the part-time thing that we were just talking about, that the turnover rate and that kinda stuff. We only have two part timers at the airport, thank goodness, um but uh the turnover of that and having to get council approval, just to hire somebody to work twenty-eight hours a week is um to me excessive.
How much did your part-time employees make?
Nine seventy-five. Um so there was that, uh they can be excluded from this process, or um I I don't know however we can work around that, but the the, again, the turnover rate and having to go through this process, sometimes every three months, it seems like, or less. Um on the wording of where the council steps in, I think it should be more specific, um cause you were saying that y'all just want the ability to step in if you want to, or the ability to interview people. I think it should reflect that in the employee manual, not just say, you know, the mayor, approved by the mayor and the council, that says the mayor and the council has to approve it, the way it's worded. So if it's just an option, maybe the council has the right or the uh option or whatever to interview said candidates. Uh cause whatever's in here is what it has to be, is the way we're all looking at it. Um and then the only other thing I've throwed down was the personnel committee, um the way I look at that, it is another level of protection, it's another level of of, I guess, opinions and inspections on whatever happens, goes to the supervisor, then it goes personnel, then maybe it goes to the mayor and the council for a final determination of whatever it is, if the personnel committee deems it to be so. Um because I look at it as a, the personnel committee is a jury of your peers, just like if you go out and get arrested for doing something, you have a jury trial. It's a jury of your peers, it's not the end-all, be-all Supreme Court kinda thing.
The thing with the uh the personnel committee we had, an issue with was with the timeframe, sometimes, say, um with the uh civil service jobs. There's a timeframe that has to be adhered to, and if the personnel committee has to go to the personnel committee, which goes from there to the council, by the time they make it to the council, that time period is darn near over.
Right, and and it could be that maybe civil service jobs are excluded from the personnel, because it is a different animal.
See, they have two layers, they have the civil service board within the council.
Right.
See, but that's just what we had, we had the civil service board, personnel committee, didn't the council?
Yeah.
That created a whole problem.
And and I I think we all agree to that, that it's just, the personnel committee gives the rest of us another level of of uh, I guess, protection.
A lot of, a lot of supervisors didn't even wanna be on personnel, they fear repercussions for them going to get something, so just rubber stamping and stepping on through.
Yeah, and and that's a valid point too.
Well, like Mr. Moreland said here, there needs to be a city councilman on that committee, so we're gonna keep it, there's always been a city councilman on there.
Absolutely. And and that keeps the city council informed as well.
Charles, can I ask you about that, a city council person serving on personnel, and they're hearing disciplinary action or rep or something? And they take disciplinary action in personnel, and then it gets appealed to the council?
There are only one thousand, so you say one with the council.
Okay, I just wanna make sure you don't have.
One and a half, we've been. I mean, there's always been somebody on the, on the council.
I just, I just wanted to make sure he was okay with that, legally, you know.
I mean, that's the way we usually run this show.
It it was, yeah, it was.
Mr. Winter was the chairman for years, and then when he would step down.
They were in, they were in.
They uh they usually meet like at ten o'clock in the morning.
It needs to be somebody that's very flexible in their work hours though, that can come. So I don't know which council, so if y'all want personnel to stay.
And also, it's not just department heads on that personnel.
No.
Yeah, no, there's only one department head on it.
Yeah, they're all department heads.
We have a lot of supervisors.
Supervisors.
Everybody, department heads, don't they?
They're supervisors.
Supervisor. I'm the only department head on it.
You're the department head.
So I I I still wanna know how you want the higher process to work, tell me from the time we give you the.
No, we we finished hearing everything, but once we go through this, we're, that's what we're gonna talk about.
We're not, we haven't gotten there yet, okay.
Yeah. Uh, so how many people are on that personnel, on the personnel committee right now?
Seven.
We have more than one department head. Mr. White, I'm just a department head.
I don't know where classification is, I thought you were supervisor, I don't, I don't know.
Mayor, can I ask a thing?
Ms. Martha?
Um, from a legal standpoint, the the city's been in a lot of lawsuits, and you know, I understand that the council wants to be more involved, and I think that that's great. I agree with the personnel committee, because it's what has been here um in the past, my question's for Mr. Menefield. So if um the council does things the way they wanna do things, and the way that's written, what the changes that they wanna make, won't that open the city up for lawsuits if they discriminate against who they investigate?
Who they investigate?
Or who they interview, if they're not gonna interview everybody, then don't be opening ourselves up to a lawsuit against the city, someone saying, oh, you discriminated against me, because you interviewed me, and you didn't interview Tom.
You know, actually, if they be interviewing for a job, of course they interview because it is a time limit. They got a time limit for somebody applying for the job, and they don't do that within that much of time, then you're not liable. But if a person applies for the job, and you can't find any legitimate reason that you don't interview that person for the job, that's discriminatory. And it could be something that somebody could blame you for, lab it.
What about a job that's not a department head or something that, I mean, we're talking about going to council totally, if he wants to hire a new lineman, and he gets twenty-five applications, he picks three. Are we discriminating against the other twenty-two?
Yeah, you you really are.
So that's an open question here.
That's 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 my whole point.
That's current everyday operation. Yeah, I mean, the supervisor. You can be sued over not interviewing people, I wouldn't think, you shouldn't have to interview all of them, you should narrow it down.
So that's why you got to, you need to make some guidance, as far as applications, and they should be.
Yeah.
And that kinda, set some current, that makes you visit, that makes you feel liable.
Well, if you get a good one, if you get a bad one, you got more problems.
Yeah, but I mean, if you shoot, you know, young man go, the employee gonna be when you hire him to begin with, they gonna be good or bad. But I think a HR would eliminate a lot of these problems, council can't handle day-to-day, that's only obvious, HR, that's their job, be obvious, I believe it.
Well, they don't know what we're elected to do, most city councils, probably ninety-nine point nine percent of them, that's not what they do. I was on city council before in another city, and that's not what we were hired, we weren't hired to run the city from day to day. And and that's not what I wanna do, I don't wanna, I don't wanna interview uh twenty people that applied for some position, I don't have time to, I don't wanna do that, I mean. If we're, if we're, if it passed and we do it, I have to, I guess, but that's not, I don't think, our job.
But at one point, we were looking at hiring HR, it just went up the smoke.
Well, they talked about that, uh.
It didn't go up in smoke.
Early of the day, we couldn't find anybody for fifty thousand dollars a year, it didn't go up in smoke. Mr. Taylor, they would, they discussed that that issue early today.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was in class, uh, okay, I can't, it was hard for me to read, it's been a day.
That's definitely something I think we need to pursue, and try to do that.
Or either use a temporary agency, and until we can have an HR person in the budget, since it's not in the budget now. But use a temporary agency until we do the budget for the next fiscal year, and that would eliminate a lot of problems.
Talking about for new hires?
Uh-huh, yeah.
For new hires.
I think that's a good idea, it won't work in my department, because if I go temporary, I'd have to go to the union hall, and they're not gonna come here unless they get union wages, which is about three times what we paid them. So that's where, wouldn't work in my department.
Yeah, okay.
But you said, you said, you said temporary goes what?
I said if we go to temporary, for me to get a lineman, uh through a temporary agency, I'd have to go through the union hall.
Right.
The IVW and street board, lineman, and they make, they make about twice what I make through the union, so we'll we'll get zero applicants.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll get applicants until we show them the salary, so that's why, I would love to to go through the union hall and pay my man union wages, and me making union wages. I would dearly love that, trust me, it would make my life so much easier.
Yeah.
But that that's, that's why, and 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 uh temp wouldn't work for me.
Yeah, sure.
Now, maybe for a part-time, if I had some kind of specialty, I just needed a neck-down laborer just to stand there and do some repetitive tests. I might could do it, but right now, I limit mine, if they had, their minimum requirement is to go through an apprentice program, or go through a boat tour, and have a a a graduation certificate in the industrial electrician, uh the industrial maintenance or something like that, that's the minimum. But we were talking about going through applications, I can get twenty applications, and I would think I'm. I can get twenty applications and I would think I would be able to get two that I would even entertain. Because, I'll give you an example, I put an ad one time in the paper to hire a lineman. And I got almost thirty applications, I said, what happened? I got a picture from a chicken plant that worked on the line, considered themselves linemen. So, so, if, if, you know, so, I, there's no reason that you could interview those people because they didn't even know what, what they were really applying for.
And, and that makes sense, I mean, you may get a lot of applicants, but no, if you had twenty-five applicants, you wouldn't interview all of them, especially if they didn't meet the qualifications.
Right, you would have to, you would have to narrow it down to, to, you, you first, you get your stack and first go through here, the people that had some experience in what you do.
Some companies use both, they hire through the door and they hire through temporary agency. So, I mean, you can still hire your department through the door.
Yeah, yeah, Rick, Rick Buckner had a good idea, you know, he brought up the temporary agency.
Some hire through the door, some hire, you know, temporary, they fluctuate between. And those jobs that, that are unionized, you might have to hire them through the door.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But how long is temporary?
Temporary. Who knows?
It's defined, I think.
No, they gotta limit it.
It is.
After so long, you have to either hire them or let them go on these temporarys.
Well, I guess the agency, you know, it may be three months, it may be six months, it's whatever, you know, um, the agency said, I guess.
I think what Buckner said is a minimum of three months.
Okay.
And if, and if you let them go or whatever, or if you hire them or whatever, you still are obligated, he's left.
You're obligated for that contract to pay them three months for that employee. So if you get somebody in the first month, you say, this guy's a cracker jack or lady, is a cracker jack, we need to hire her. And you hire, you still have to pay the other, that, that's the way he was explaining it.
Okay, so we'd be best to let them work the three months under the temp, under the temp agency.
Well, I think it kinda depends, because if they're that good employee.
You can hire them right away.
Yeah, somebody might also know that and hire out from under you. You know, so, it, it, it's kind of a, it might, we spend for two months, it might save us money by getting a good employee that, that's proven.
And then on the flip side of that is if you have someone that's not worth keeping, you know immediately and you get rid of them.
Get them, get them out of there and get somebody else.
Okay.
Mr. Cool, did you have anything to say?
I'd say men, but hire human resource director.
Yeah, that's a good idea. But then the human resource can have all that, a lot of stuff as far as being disciplined, so that, that, you know, that saves a lot of hassle.
Well, if, if the council is, is, you know, I think the human resource person is, is really where the city needs to go. You can get somebody that's special citizen, in that it can, can handle a lot of things that we have questions about, you have questions about. You know, all of you, it, it, that's what their job is, is to answer those questions, they're, they're to have the knowledge base in those areas. But until such time as the city can hire a human resource director, we have to hire employees. Hopefully, we don't have to discipline or fire employees between now and that time, that's not something any of us want to do. But we have to hire employees, discipline, and, you know, terminate, we have to continue to do that.
Yes.
Until we get a human resource director, so, keeping the personnel committee and changing, you know, maybe how it's structured and the way things will, will work. It is, it's gonna be, you know, I, I feel that's the way the city needs to go. Until such time that you get a human resource director in here, and you're gonna have to go back and rewrite the manual again. And, you know, regardless of what you do right now, you're gonna have to do it again if we get a human resource director. And then the manual can be re, you know, rewritten to accommodate the human resource matter, or they'll be, be disbanded because they don't need them anymore. Or you may wanna have them for some other purpose.
The human resources director should know how to do this, maybe.
That's, that's their job. If you hire a good quality individual.
They should be able to present a manual that's.
Should be able to, you just give them, you give them something, they'll go with it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think, uh, you're, if we do, with the personnel committee having one of us there that can communicate with the rest of the group immediately, I mean, that's the thing. To be more knowledgeable about what's going on with some issues, you know? I think that's the, that's been one, I'm not speak, I don't mean to speak for everybody, but that's been a complaint. That maybe some things are not, they're minor, but some things maybe we would like to bend in and know more, if, if.
That was one good thing about the personnel committee, cause y'all got a copy of the personnel committee minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
And it told you immediately.
Yeah, that, that was in my proposal, to maintain to have the minutes, you know, cause that can be done within an hour at the end of the meeting. All council members have a copy.
It'd be adjacent to civil service then, cause I don't feel like they should have to go through the personnel.
Right.
Well, that, I mean, that, that may be something that, that, I, you know, that needs to be done. But, uh, I'd like to reinforce one more thing, that, uh, motive for all the vacation, uh, counting, not counting against your forty-hour week. That, that, I, I don't know how it affects all the departments, but for my department and for the line crew, I know it's stranglehold in our department. And, and, it's something that really needs to be addressed.
So, what do you mean, like, it's, so they call, if they, if they use a vacation day on the day that you were expecting them, you mean that's actually those?
No, not expecting, now, what we're talking about, we're not talking about scheduled overtime. I'm talking about emergency callouts, accidental callouts. You know, I have, I have two employees on call. That week I have a, an employee that took vacation, not the ones that are on call. Another employee takes vacation, somebody runs over a fire hydrant. Guy that, that took the day of vacation, not gonna come out, cause he's not gonna make overtime. He hadn't met his forty hours. So why should vacation be held against the employee? He is mad.
And that's what Bo suggested, changing that.
That's, that's why, I just wanted to reinforce what, what Bo said.
It made complete sense.
And also, um, like, like Eric said, um, non-scheduled overtime, my departments are different. We have, my guys, their shift work they do, they have like fifty-six hours overtime a week. Well, six hours, I mean fifty-six hours of paper, or not paper, but a week, six of that's overtime. So, that's six hours overtime, well, if they take one day of holiday, I mean, vacation, they lose that. The way I see it is, la, they earned that vacation last year. They worked that fifty-six hours last year and earned it, so why aren't they getting it the next year? They're only getting fifty hours.
So he's saying not just callouts.
Not just callouts, I'm talking.
Overtime, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it affects you, because you have to take your vacation or lose it. Let's say, today is Wednesday, okay, tomorrow morning starts a new work week. I take a day's vacation, if I was a salary, if I wasn't a salary employee, I'd take a day's vacation tomorrow. Next Monday night, we have a storm come in, I come out and work, I get straight time. Where you get time and a half, cause you didn't take a vacation day, you didn't take a day.
And, let, let me add one more.
Same thing with jury duty, if you get called up for jury duty for Monday and you have to work Wednesday night, that's at straight time. Now, they might can change it or make allocations, but in the handbook, it's not covered.
And you, you may have somebody that brings up a point and, and, and there's, or, Mr. Menefield's not here, and there's attorneys that, that are, are specialties in the labor law. So I'm not gonna try to be a specialist in it, but, but the labor law says if you work forty hours, anything over forty hours, you're gonna get time and a half, that's minimum. Minimum, cause like what we were saying, you can change the law for the better. You can say after forty hours, we're gonna pay triple time. You can make it better for the employee, you just can't take it away from them. So, you know, if that, if that comes up, just keep that in mind.
I mean, it just makes sense to pay them, they should be counted, uh, vacation days, because if you take vacation, you still get your check. You know, so it, it's the same thing, so, yeah, I agree with you.
And we're not talking sick time, sick time was.
No, we're not vacation.
Well, we wanna make that, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and it was, on what I handed out, you know, we simply said, we understand sick time should not be counted. And just for the sake of morale of your employees, that just speaks a lot to them, you know? And, and what it does, we don't have a ton, a ton of emergencies, I mean, we do have some, they've lately had several, you know, with arclagash running over stuff and storms. But I mean, it's not gonna be a lot. Right, and, and there's no fit, definitive price on what you can say will cost the city or save the city, because you can't predict. Councilman Taylor and I, doing the same job, we come out, we didn't take vacation, we're gonna be time and a half. Yeah. But if I took a day's vacation, I get straight time, well, how do they know, how can they project that I'm gonna take a day's vacation when a storm hits? Yeah, yeah. The week of, not the day of, the week of, you know, so that, that's what we're wanting to, to, to look at. And we're proposing, and like I said, it could, uh, you know, there's nothing that says you have to answer the phone and, and I'll reiterate it. When my guys come out and work, they don't do it to help the council, they don't do it to help the mayor, they don't do it to help the city, they do it to help each other. Because they know next week, they could be the one.
Cause they don't have to answer the phone, cause their person is on.
That's right, and, and unless you're gonna pay them to be attached to that phone, they don't have to answer it. So if they know they're gonna come out at straight time, they just didn't answer the phone. Or they can answer the phone and say, I just drank a beer, I can't come out, there's nothing, then, you can't discipline them for not answering the phone.
You can't discipline them for not answering their personal phone, no way.
Right. So, that's just something that, it's been a long time coming, and if we're gonna overhaul, we would like y'all to consider looking into that, we appreciate it.
Okay, um, do you all have any questions about the promotion process? Did you look at that? Do you have any questions about that?
Yeah, we, we addressed, uh, or I addressed, we had questions, uh, page twenty-four, I put my stuff up, but it, it had in, in the.
Some page, twenty-three?
It had in the proposals that the city council would, would review and approve, or, uh.
The mayor and council?
Pages thirty-five, promotions, that, one of the things we brought up is our page of promotions on page thirty-five, we're in the same as what y'all had. So.
And then taking the mayor out completely, department heads and council.
But you say you, you don't have a page, ours doesn't match yours?
No, ma'am, our pages don't match on that. Because under promotions, it, it, in, in what y'all had, it covers the maximum one step per year and all that, and it has to be approved by the council. Yes, sir. We don't have that verbiage. Yeah. And what we were kinda wondering is. Yes, that got changed and we were talking about it, gonna check on that. Right. Cause that other page, it looked to me, as I read that, that that was approved by the council right before we came in. Cause it, it addressed the new council coming in, Jan, it said, beginning of twenty-one nineteen, so that, that, the rates for the city, all that would've been done. That had to be done prior to y'all being sworn in, but. We, you guys did get that page.
I think they just somehow didn't get the revised pages.
In the transition.
We reviewed all the minutes and it's not even there. Yeah, so that's.
Would have been after April of twenty-ninth, I think.
I went from last year.
Yes, we were here.
Five, two.
We, we came in January first of nineteen.
Yeah, I don't remember, we didn't talk about it.
The only thing that's been changed since y'all came is when you took.
Civil service.
Civil service.
Do you remember anything about y'all making that change?
Nope.
Mr. Parker?
No, but you said it wasn't in the menu, so.
This council didn't do it, it's gonna be an older.
It had to be before.
But what we're saying is, our last, uh.
The manual before April of nineteen, right?
We got, we got April of nineteen, April one of twenty nineteen revision, revised April one twenty nineteen, that's what we have. But it's not the same as what y'all had.
You have, you didn't get some revised pages that happened before that. But before that, we never got any of that. I'm just gonna give you an updated version and you.
All employees need it.
Well, when this book's redone, everybody's gonna have to sign off for a new one, there's gonna be so many changes.
Well, I, we don't know when that is until then.
I know, but I'm going to give.
Well, we disagree with these changes, is what we're saying.
We have, but they happened, but they didn't, we can't hide it through minutes. I don't, I'll just, I'll have to look and see, but nothing changed in this book that didn't go through.
But if that's the case, then we really wanna argue those points, as, as you always. Yeah, and, and you need to, because once we do everything, once we wrap this up, then we can make sure we have it or we've addressed it. You know, whatever concerns you have, so, your concerns about this, because we don't know what happened, it happened before us. So, you know, the only thing we can do is fix it and make it right moving forward from here, so whatever concerns you have about it, we wanna address it, okay?
And that's why we're come appealing to y'all to try to fix this thing.
So do you agree with this promotion process or not, that's, that's kinda what I'm trying to get to?
Hey, we're not currently doing that, we're doing, um, promotions this on there, when an employee is hired or promoted.
Can I see yours?
When an employee is hired or promoted, every year for two years, they do not get the automatic two percent of the job approval budget. They have to be approved by the mayor.
That's the number.
First three years, right?
No, first two.
First two, on the third one they get, that's new hire, not promotion.
And promotion, and promotion.
Yeah.
New, new hire and promotion. What you gave them states, after the first year, a promotion only gets one step.
Yeah, maximum one step.
I don't, I didn't know that was even in there. We have been given two steps, so where did this come, that's what's concerning us. That's in, that's in my book too, that's in my book too. Is it, is it? Yes, that one, maximum one, is in the, my book too, but no, they were gone by, so why is it there? I don't, I think that it got, you know, there's stuff in this book that's in so many different places, have y'all noticed that? You can be over here and it says something and then you can go three pages, four pages, same. And then it's addressed again, I think it didn't ever get changed.
Here's what we're basically promoting, it is.
Yes.
Supervisor, like we just, uh, excuse me, I think.
I think nobody knew it was.
Extenuate circumstances, you can go to the, with approval from the mayor or somebody, and you have to really sell that case. So I, I've never been able to do it.
Okay.
Major.
I'm not the one three step.
Yeah.
I can recall.
Yeah, so, so.
And it wasn't public part of the firm.
So it, it kinda happened, but we've always did two, until they started being able to two percent to kinda, you can get them on board. And it kinda keeps them there until they, it's cause they could get the two, start on the two percent. That was just a tool they could use if they were good employees. Now, it doesn't guarantee you have to give them that step, if they're just a mediocre slacker and, you know, and you're having issues anyway. There's no guarantee that you, in the past. We don't want it, I mean, we were so open to giving something, and I can't give sixty, but then it costs us this amount.
Now you're back to the new hire. See, I already said we're reading this, it's such a nightmare.
That's what tax people want, is something that's been revised and they didn't give out.
Well, and then if you got more, maybe you know, and then. In the past too, I would be conditioned, maybe it's our issue, and then it got for now, I was doing it myself, so I don't know where the wrong part is. I don't know why other books are. Oh, I'm sorry. Packet, okay, packet, the red line.
See, and that was, we made the change about the civil service, you know, we got a new protocol, and then we got just that insert, but they got just that insert, so it seemed like. I was having to revise more than what it had, and it was only exceptional, cause they never had the updated parts that we had.
Mr. Woodford, you had something that you wanted to say all about?
I'm not, I'm not a big dog, yeah, I would, I'm, I have a work for the city, but I'm, I'm a taxpayer in the town, I pay for everybody's salary, so, when you're talking about hiring. A hundred thousand, three dollars positions, do the city really have the money? Because realize you have a bad contract with FELCO, eight more years, I suffered with the city, that wasn't on their fault, and then we, we were gonna hire all these people coming here and running the town. But Mr. Bensley said, well, he might not be qualified to do everything, I don't know, but my thing is, my thing is, I want to ask about Steve. Sunday, Sunday evening, Ms. Walker, and, and I'm gonna try to help you, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Butler, Sunday evening, I was on my porch. And the officer was my race, and also the young man was my race, in your dignity, Mr. Taylor, and I look at, he stopped it, he stopped the car, and the brother didn't have no tags. Didn't have no tags on the car, running around in the neighborhood, so he stopped him, and he went over and laid a car in, and everything, and he came back in an intelligent way, told his brother that. Uh, he didn't have no tags and like that, and he told him to fix the situation, so, so he moved on. My thing is, I would've ran, I, I wouldn't care if he was black, white, or blue, I would've ran him, because he didn't even have nothing on him, but by him being black, and the officer being black. Like me and Mr. Taylor, he gave him a break, I'm black, I would've ran him, but that's not a prejudice thing, that's just a law enforcement situation, he just was getting jumped, I guess. Well, so, so I won't give, so what I'm saying, when I'm saying when it comes, when it comes to officer, hi- hiring of the officer, I think that. Regardless of black, white, or blue, the, the, uh, Steve need to do that recommendation, then he bring it forward to council, and let y'all approve the, the recommendation, that's my answer.
Well, you know, the answer to that, maybe the officer used community relations, and we give the young man a pass, at a particular time, not because of his color, maybe because of how he acted when the officer approached him.
Yeah, I got seen, he, he, he had a decent attitude.
But as far as to the budget, um, you know, it, it's a, a thing that we have a reserve, we have a reserve that's probably, you know, it's probably pretty, you know, substantial. So, with that reserve, you know, you're supposed to have so much left in your reserves, but I'm pretty sure we have over that left in the reserves, I don't know, that's Mr. Mike's.
We have millions probably in the reserve.
Hold on, that's Mr. Mike's department, but what I'm saying is, a certain position would eliminate a lot of these problems that we're having, lots of them, we can't be set for today, if we had.
What, what, what Mr. Taylor asked me is that question, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying you're wrong or right, but that reserve is, just it gave me out there quit or stolen.
That's why you have so much, you have to have so much in your reserves, you, 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 there's a deadline, that you have to have.
So, I would attest that.
No, we have over deadline in our reserves.
Well, you can avoid it, that's fine, but then again, the fact that Tyson, I'm a supervisor, I have to pay for whatever decision y'all make.
I mean, I'm pretty sure any city near taxpayers.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that, that, I'm just saying, whatever decision that y'all make, that it don't go back to Tyson, like myself, so that's all I'm saying.
I just think it would eliminate a lot of these problems, we would.
You'll see how the money to do, I would agree with you, if you have the money to do, without going into your reserve, and then we have a business, you don't have the money to do.
No, it's not.
I don't know, I'm standing there, I'm standing there, thank you.
My page twenty-three, we've been added, so we can make a little bit of changes, it's in.
So, we made the decision to keep the personnel committee and put, uh, add a council member as the chair of the personnel committee? Not till we get a H R.
We can't be, we can't be the jury and the jury.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yes, we can do one, and then when they appeal, we have to do the other one, also.
Cause we'll keep the personnel committee.
Yeah, for a time being.
Excluding.
Like I said, if we.
Yeah, because it's already revised, the revision that did, uh, take the personnel committee out of civil service, so that, that was the revision made in April, so. So, then next, uh, what council member?
I go still, that'll work, so I don't know.
We've got two there. Probably just, is Mr. Bradford, and he probably would be the one doing.
Okay.
And pay him, probably, could you be flexible enough?
Which ones, mister, how many?
Well, I think that was, since that was held by district lead council person, and it would only be fair to a district lead council person is the chair, and since I can't do it, I would like to keep it.
Well, available, I don't mind doing that, I'd be flexible enough to do that, I don't mind doing that.
Okay, and what, and what committees am I on, Mr. Taylor?
No, I started it out.
No, you brought it up.
I'm not gonna argue with you today, ma'am.
No, you brought it up, I'd like to know, which committees? Because you must know more than I do. I go to the building and grounds, what do you go to?
Okay, so we got key, P.
I don't mind doing that, do we need to put it on agenda to elect me, or, or is that something, I mean, I don't mind doing, I mean, I told you, I retired from that, assistant principal, discipline people, but I.
I don't see you doing it, so you get to do it now for city council.
But I, I don't, I'm out doing what I need to do, if it'll help us, I don't mind doing that, yes, sir, and then I can correspond with the council, let them know, and they can have input, too, with me.
Yeah.
And we can, may I, I'll do all that we need to do, so.
Correct, all right.
So, when we look at the red line, uh, if we would just look at what's been redlined, and then we can make the necessary changes, since we're going to keep the personnel committee. Uh, so that means that we can eliminate some of the red line.
As far as being in on hiring new employees, do we wanna specify, like you said, specifically who we want to have some input with, or certain levels or positions, or what do y'all think? I mean, I don't really wanna be, you know, hiring somebody like that most grass and up there in the board, stuff like that, you know, so.
We never took part-time to personnel, do you mind me? Yes. We never took part-time to personnel, it's such a turnover.
Part-time with the mayor.
It is such a turnover. Pardon?
So, part-time with the mayor.
So, full-time only, excluding civil service, most of personnel, interviews, and recommendation to the mayor.
Okay. But when it talks about the compensation on page thirty-five, the part-time employees, part-time compensation, um, that's supposed to be done with the mayor and council. And we have not had anything to do with the salaries of part-time employees to this day.
Page your own.
On page thirty-five. And I'm just kinda going back and forth since part-time came up.
So, that is, yeah, that's in there, in the name of.
Yeah, and we have not had anything to do with the salaries for part-time employees.
What would the council have, what, what would be the process?
The process, we will go around what their salary is going to be, instead of someone being hired part-time, and you give this person ten dollars, you give this person fourteen dollars, you give that person eighteen dollars, that's a problem. So, that needs to come through the council, then we won't have any gripe about it, cause.
In the council meeting?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's saying the manual, salaries of part-time employees will be set by the mayor and council.
So, can we, can we just list all the positions that are currently, let me give y'all a list, of what all the positions are, and what the part-time salaries are, and then if.
Start from there.
Again.
When a person is hired part-time.
We'll go person, not, I'm going individual by individual, are we going by?
Yeah, but when a person is hired part-time, then we are supposed to set the salary along with the mayor, that has not happened, so.
I didn't know it was in book.
Yeah.
Well, it's in my handbook.
It's in mine.
The mayor just said it's not in here, so.
It's not in mine.
So, I'm in the handbook, then which one y'all would go by?
This is the first problem, two minute versions of a handle.
Page thirty-five.
I know, but I'm in my handbook that I have to look at every day, wow.
Really? What's in here? Because this was probably. Yes, it is, page thirty-five, right there. Okay, so, it's gonna be, the salary, though, is gonna be related to the job description, not the individual.
But my question is, does that not fall under the same category as private information, your income?
No.
No?
Not as a public servant.
That's private, when you work for the city.
Well, you're, yeah, your social, social security, well, yeah, that. But I'm just wondering.
Anybody can ask for a salary, and we have to give it to them.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just.
We're on the front page of the Inquisitor, okay, just asking.
Here, in private business, it might, I'd be, but in the public, like even education, these were all.
It's public knowledge, okay.
And anybody wanted it, they could get it, so, see how little we was paying as teachers, so.
What about the demotions, are there? Shouldn't that be with the department here?
The page you're on, Mr. Taylor.
Page thirty-five. Voluntary, involuntary.
The only demotions I can ever remember were voluntary, people asking to move to another position, even if it was less money.
Of course, I mean, if that happened, and they didn't like it, they could, well, I guess, would they, would they, would a person who was ever denoted without being, I, I mean, if they were done it, you know, it wasn't voluntary. Did they appeal to the personnel committee, or would they appeal to the council? I mean, I guess they could always appeal to the council.
I would think if I was gonna. If I was gonna demote an employee, I would go through the personnel committee, and if the employee didn't agree.
Then they'd have to.
They'd have to.
They'd have to have a disciplinary action if that happened.
So, that should be covered here, with that, having the committee still in place, okay.
Unless it's voluntary.
Yes, sir. And all that just needs to be documented and signed and documentation, so that fair can buy.
So, when we look at, back at, come through. Why would you limit it for time, this, I feel, yeah, so, do we need to just take this red line out for that second paragraph, want the candidate for employment, that paragraph? And either it's just the mayor or mayor and council, how do you want that, to read my reason?
When a supervisor makes a recommendation to hire, it goes to, to the mayor, not to make a decision, but it goes to the mayor, then it's up to the mayor's office to put it on personnel.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
We don't ask for it to go to personnel, we're not supposed to, we're, everything these department heads do goes straight to the mayor, and the mayor requests it for personnel, they call the personnel meeting, we can, they can.
So, if we take out the red line, that's what would happen, it would happen, what has been happening.
It would say, goes, turns into the mayor to request personnel. Well, the wording, you can go back to what it was before April first, right?
Yeah, that's, that, that's what I'm asking.
My question is this, if we just add the councilman on the personnel committee, that pretty much handles the majority of the stuff on here.
Yeah, but we still need to just go through and make sure.
What I'm gonna say is, that's until the budget and our revises and what, to get a H R, and when we get a H R, they're gonna go back through this, and change this all.
This is so we can continue our process.
Continue to.
We might, y'all might get one in the first month, and it might be a year. Or the H R director might say that the, a city councilman needs to be on the personnel committee, but the H R director might wanna chair the personnel committee, it depends, differently, I mean, you know. Different corporations, not municipal, different people have some in their personnel committees and a H R director, so the, the H R director will have some, some input from.
I think what the H R personnel committee should go away.
Well, then you're taking a responsibility.
Yeah, and, and we would like a council member over, just for oversight.
Okay.
Or, or a H R person.
Yeah, I, I, I think the H R person is gonna be added.
They'll, they'll be here full-time, available, and knowledgeable in all matters, based on handbook and employer.
They could be the chairperson.
To chair.
The councilman.
Control.
Still set.
But then you still have your.
For oversight.
Group of peers to hear what's going on.
So, if they see something, it's not really, they can raise their hand, or they can spread the word.
What, I have questions, kinda, I mean, it's related, what, what do you, what does personnel, personnel or personnel in a city make, I mean, that's our size, I mean, I did, my experience is coming from school board experience. And I, I know with the one in Cleveland makes, but that's a small parish, but they're still dealing with about two hundred something people, two, three, two, in the seventies, eighties range.
I, I, I think, say, to get a good one, you're gonna be in the eighties range, I mean, people that, I'm, I'm not gonna call that people salaries in town.
Yeah, I understand, but that, that gives me a good idea, because I, you were saying that we can't pay it, and I'm thinking a hundred fifty, I mean, I'm, I don't know.
They're gonna make what the mayor makes.
They're gonna make more than the mayor.
Yep, yep.
Well, this is pretty, this is pretty important, this is.
There's people.
They bring information, they, they bring accurate information, up-to-date information, that keeps us legal, so they're worth whatever.
And, and keep, and keep us legal, keep us legal with the labor law, just like Mr. Mullins want, you know, to, to, if you do vacation in time and a half, they'll know the law.
Yeah.
You know, whether we can, or we can't, you know, I mean, then.
You could pay about seventy-five thousand for an H R person.
Would it be possible to get a part-time that don't work?
No, you don't.
I don't, I don't think anybody's.
And I think what you can say in support, they're here all the time, we know what's going on.
To do a, a H R person the size of Minden, that, it's, it's gonna be, it's more than a four-hour week job, yeah, being a mayor is more than a four-hour week job.
We never know what's gonna lock the door.
Yeah, right.
Well, I, you know, talking about this, we have in the budget for a public works director, we don't have one at all, so.
That's seventy-two.
Well.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not.
It was salary.
High, high seventy.
It's seventy-something, we don't, we don't have a public, yeah, it's in the budget now, we don't have a public works director, so there's the money for an H R person.
So, we need to hire a public works director, too.
And we need that, too.
Yeah, we need, see anything here, public works.
It's just like, you're not gonna get, when Mr. Flur leaves, he's not in here, sorry, when he leaves, you're not gonna get anybody qualified for what he makes.
Are you, are you as an associate degree for that, for that position?
For a counter?
Huh, for a clerk?
Yeah.
It says it's a four-year degree.
Yeah.
Five-year now.
Four-year degree.
And as far as public works, I, it's been stated before, that, that is a tough job, that no one, the whole gamut in, in.
Off of the clerk.
Yeah, yeah, but he was talking about not being able to get a.
If we didn't have, if we didn't have the veteran people that we have.
Exactly.
If we didn't have, if we didn't have the veteran people that we have covered there.
We have a public works director, just about five or six people put together.
Big trouble. We got one.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we have these guys that work together as one, thank goodness.
Okay, Ms. Walker.
What's still my page, no, I'm not, I was just kinda waiting, you know. So, still looking at page twenty-three, so we can look at it and see what red line information we need to eliminate, and in way it can stay the same, one can make the changes and do whatever he needs to do.
I'm gonna say the leave.
Okay.
Can I ask you something real quick? It's page twenty-three, down there, uh, toward the bottom, where it says the, uh, public safety personnel will be recommended to the city council, and you can just put in there in red, by the chief of police and fire chief. You see that one?
Mm-hmm.
I just need to know if y'all, if you plan to keep that in there or not, 'cause that's, that's the recommendation.
Yeah, well, the chief does.
It doesn't matter, man, I just need to know who I need to send my recommendation to.
And that should say police or fire chiefs. You'll, you'll both need to.
Yeah.
Yeah, the motion's in on the recommendation, the police chief or fire chief.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what that says.
I think that's the, you heard her.
What does that say, 'cause it says candidates for fire chief will be given by the mayor and the city council.
No, 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 I'm talking about below that.
And it says, the public safety personnel, okay, we recommend, so that's anybody that's under those individual.
Yeah, but see, the mayor does not make the recommendation for the, uh, the police officers and the fire, that comes from the fire chief and the police chief, so he doesn't make the recommendation anyway, so his name doesn't need, the mayor doesn't need to be there.
Yeah, right.
Well, what, what they do is they send a memo to the mayor asking that it be put on the agenda for personnel's consideration, for city council's consideration.
Okay, that's different, he doesn't make the recommendation, he's just putting, he's not making the recommendation, he's just making sure he gets it up.
No, I don't know.
Gets on the agenda.
Yeah, so that's something completely different.
Yeah, and it doesn't say that.
Check properly the letter.
It's not taken, it's not even in there anyway.
Yeah, mayor's not in there.
It's just specified, make it more specific where it comes from.
The mayor will make his recommendation to the city council.
For these, for these, for these, Peter, for the, for those, you know, for these type, these directors of, of our job, that minute, per public safety personnel will be recommended to the city council by these two.
Yeah, I think that was just to make it specific, make it specific, who the recommendation is coming from.
Do you want to leave in there, who will be the final appointing authority after it conducts its interview investigation?
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's just.
That is, you don't want an interview.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's not mandating an interview.
No, it's not. But you see, the rest of it is already in the handbook about the exceptions to the process, and that's dealing with the public works, building official inspector, recreation fire chief, that, city clerk, all of that. But you were saying something in the statute that. What did you say, that you, you had resistance?
You're saying state law.
Yeah, with that statute, yeah, nothing, uh, nothing about police officer, because he's an elected official, he makes.
No, it wasn't in reference to the police, uh, the police officers, you were saying, the department head, what, what were you saying, that's what I'm asking, why you brought up this law, this statute?
Uh, the, the mayor, in revised statute, the mayor, it hires people in administration, department, administration, department head, it's right here.
Except for city attorney and city clerk, I thought you said.
Yes, yes, except for the attorney and city clerk. It's right here under mayor. You kinda have to read through that little house.
Yeah, you can't read.
Yeah, it's kinda hard to read.
Mayor has a word, higher, higher, administrative staff, being appropriate and no one's moving the, calling to bring him in.
So, how is that relevant to this?
According to the, if you're, the state law is overrides the handbook or your charter, because it's a state law.
No, we didn't, no, we didn't. Oh, you didn't.
Okay. Our attorney's gone, so we can't ask him.
So still in here, uh, the exceptions to the process are the public works director, city clerk, city attorney, building inspector, official, rec- recreation director, fire chief, building superintendent, and hiring a public safety personnel.
That's firing boards.
Yeah.
Under the firing plate, I just make the recommendation.
Yeah. But, I'm saying that, I'm reading that to say that all of these positions right here that I just read are department heads. And so they are the exception to the rule, and what you're saying is that you can appoint them without the council. You cannot, the exceptions, no, what he said was that this right here, this statute says that he can appoint the department heads without the council, is what he's saying. Even though it's in our handbook that the council is responsible for all of these positions, all of these that are listed are department heads.
Yeah, the, these all have to have a council approval.
Yeah.
I've read that, but.
Yeah.
Like city attorney, all these have to be approved by us.
He's saying that this statute right here is saying that they don't need our approval. And there's not a risk.
Well, just wait. My thing is, yes, supervisors would have to have our approval, your recommendation and our approval, wouldn't it?
So we don't leave. Yeah.
I mean, it has in the past.
I'm just going by what I had a legal advisor on, on what that said. But go ahead and leave it in there.
But, yeah, I'm looking at that, and I mean, I, I, I know we like the city attorney, we had to approve that, you know, in the beginning, that was not something you had a decision on by yourself, it was something.
No, yes, city attorney and, uh.
City clerk.
City clerk for sure.
And, okay.
All these other positions, which are, you know, department heads. Okay, so the next thing, the hiring of part-time employees and temporary employees will be at the request of the supervisor, well, you see it, and subject to the council approval. Well.
Where did that?
That's the very last paragraph on page twenty-three, and that's where we get into the, uh, part-time, the hiring of the part-time and temporary employees, because on page thirty-five, that's when it talks about the salaries, but this is the hiring.
Yeah, and that's what I said earlier, I don't, I mean, whatever the council wants to do, I don't really wanna, personally, I don't wanna be responsible for hiring part-time employees.
We, I, and it's, it's not meant for us to interview again, but we need to approve for a part-time position to, uh, to come available. We need to approve that position instead of it being said, okay, well, I need this person for this, no, that should come through the council, part-time and temporary positions. We need to approve those.
Like if y'all wanna further, can we email you and, and get like, like an eight-hour timeframe, because part-time's flat.
Do we, are we required to, um, to post these jobs when they come available?
It should be full-time.
Full-time, not part-time temporary.
Not full-time temporary?
But we're advertising.
Advertising.
Yes, full-time, full-time.
Why wouldn't we advertise for part-time position?
Just full-time.
Or just advertising. But I'm saying, why wouldn't we advertise for part-time position or temporary position?
I don't know. Well, the brick people are gone and they have the most of them.
Yeah, I mean, it, it would just.
There's feedback here.
You just have, you just take applications all the time out there for part-time, right?
Yeah, yeah, we keep them on file, we have them on file.
And so they're not, they're not like specific, they're just part, it says part-time employees, and like, usually it's not specific, like, uh, groundskeeper or something like that, it's just a part-time employee.
Correct, correct, but I wanted to, I think y'all were talking about two separate things, because with, in, in relation to the, uh, part-timers, Ms. Trigga, you wanna be able to, the council to say, how many part-timers that we allow, or, or what the.
Purposes.
Job positions are.
Yeah, we need to know the purpose of this.
Where, I think you're talking about, uh, Mr. Ty, you're talking about, um, the individual person, okaying the individual person themselves, that's not what you sound.
No, I know what I'm saying.
I'm saying, okaying the position.
The position, but not the person.
Not the person, just the position.
No, I was, what I was saying was, as far as to advertise, when positions are available, to advertise like in the, in the press era.
Especially if it's a specific position.
Yeah, that's city general.
It's just general time, recreation, but it's a speci- a specific part-time job.
Yeah, a lawnmower guy coming in, I mean, he can go to another lawn service and get eleven dollars an hour, whereas the city is more consistent at nine seventy-five, you know what I mean, they're here, here around, whereas that's more seasonal, so you're taking that, that gamble, that your position may not be available if you decide to come back.
Yeah, or they may have another job and their part-time position will work just fine for them, but how will they know to apply if it's not advertised? Because some people, you have some people, believe it or not, that may be looking for part-time work, you know, so it, I'm just saying.
What, I, I'm okay with advertising, but what you're saying is you have to advertise?
But how long is the app, okay, so you, he's, you keep the application, how long is that application active?
I'd have to spank that, but probably a year. Yeah, oh, yes, but I think, uh.
Now, you're only, you are budgeted for so many part-time slots.
Right.
It's not right here, it's seven of them slots.
Um, does the city website have a place for openings?
Yeah, it's up here.
Yes. Okay, so, does that part?
I mean, the, the phone up there rings off the hook, and when they call part-time and they, are there specific, you know, lawn care, beautification, wherever, we've seen it out there.
Okay.
So whatever happened to supplying and then, I mean, posting the job and then in press era, so maybe everybody.
It's full-time.
Huh?
Full-time we do, yeah, full-time we do.
We can start putting, what kind, I mean, if Rocky wants to, he needs to do, shoot me a memo and say, put it on the website, we'll put it up there, or you could do that.
Are we talking about a requirement or just something?
No, no, just to cover our bases.
I'm fine with that.
Continuously taking, continually taking part-time applications.
Police officers stay up there all the time.
Yeah.
We're not taking, once you meet, once you meet your max, we're not taking any at this time, we only allow so many, or once, if you have slots open, then it should be.
Well, you, I mean, when, when somebody comes in, in the private sector, you're required to take applications, you can't just say, we're not hiring. You know, if, if you have posted somewhere that you have part-time, full-time, or whatever, you have to take that application.
Well, at the meetings that I went to, that were about labor law and everything, that they told us, do not take an application unless you have advertised for it, you get yourself in big trouble. So, I don't, we don't take applications out there, I keep, I give the switchboard a list, what positions are open, and those are the positions that they show people when they come in, what do you have open, here's the list, if they feel like they qualify for one, they fill out an application for it.
So you were told that, that if there are no positions being advertised, people cannot submit an application for employment, just a general application.
They do not accept the application for coming forward.
Okay, well, that's interesting, that's something different, different from, like, school board, I mean, they constantly take applications for employment, so then.
And then those applications that come in, I think I have to keep them three years.
We always have a pool to choose from, okay.
And the applications come in, and I sign off them at the switchboard and put them in the folder behind the department, and the supervisors come in and look through them and make copies of the ones they wanna call in for an interview.
Okay, so, um, any new part-time or temporary positions, they need to be approved by the council.
Any creation.
Any creation.
Any new creation.
Any that's created.
That already has.
If there's a, yeah, that.
No, it doesn't.
But, i- if you're, if we're adopting a job description for a new position, it has to be approved by council, 'cause it's affecting the budget.
Not part-time.
For temporary.
But not part-time.
So, I mean, it's affecting whether, that's the same thing goes with the temporary employee, then that's where we're, we're missing the ball, that the temporary employee affects the budget as well, if they come in as a temporary employee making, let's say, eighteen miles an hour, doesn't that affect our budget? If we're on board.
When, when we have the position you referred to, and the temporary part-time person you're talking about standing right back there, does make eighteen dollars an hour, and there's seventy-two thousand dollars in that budget.
For that, for that particular job?
For, for that position, so do the math and weigh, save the city a lot of money.
So, my question is. How long is that particular job, because in the manual it said.
Six, six months on page eighteen.
Six months?
Yeah, six months on page eighteen. Last paragraph.
Will that, let me go back to, uh, a temporary or, or, or part-time, will that go to the personnel committee?
Normally, a temporary position will not exceed six months.
And does it not go to the personnel committee?
No, it's like she said, normally, it won't go longer than six months.
Yeah. Okay, so if, uh, if, like, you would let the council, if you don't let the council, I'm not gonna know, 'cause the personnel committee may not know.
And this was just done because we were in a bind, that money that those other.
Well, we had a lot of money on the table.
From? Who's that, who put that money, who put that money in?
The tourism and timber pollers put up ten grand.
We're in a bind with, uh, human resource, we're in a bind with public works, so we're, we're just in a bind.
We are.
Yeah.
So.
But we're trying, we're trying to get through this, whatever this is that we got, that changed, I was doing, I don't know how long that was, that'll last.
You know, I, Wanda, I mean, you, you can justify however you want, but one, one thing doesn't take precedence over the other, we need a public works director, we need a human resource person, so economic development, I mean, his budget had been cut anyway, if you really wanna get down to get really his budget. Budget had been cut as to what he could or could not do, so we need public works, we need a human resource person, so, in my eyes, that doesn't take precedence over, so.
Well, in all of those things, we had to amend the budget to do that, and, you know, we tried to amend the budget for free money.
It's in the budget for public works.
Well, that's a nice one.
It's in the budget, budget for public works, let's get that person. Okay, so can we get back to this, so we can, I mean, I'm trying to get enough force, I'm trying to stay on track, go from page to page. So, um.
Okay, so what was that last paragraph?
We were talking about the hiring of, of part-time and temporary employees, those positions being approved by the council.
And, and, and what I think we got into was, is it gonna be the hiring or the creation of, or whatever, how's it gonna be?
The creation.
Or something new.
This is, this means the individual.
Because that's what I'm saying, the way this is written, I'm, I'm gonna have to, we're gonna have to meet and hire every single, every person that comes in today.
We can't do the day-to-day.
No, we're not, you know, okay, so here's the thing, we don't, we don't have to, when you look at a temporary position or a part-time position, um, if you're saying, okay, we want to, they need to get the approval to go ahead and hire the person, because I'm sure that you don't just wake up one day and say, hey, let me bring this person on temporary, you thought about it, you put some thought into it, you've had time to talk to the council about it, that's not something you just wake up on the fly and do.
No, it wasn't.
So that's what I'm saying, that should have council's approval.
Well, the thing about it is.
So you're separating part-time and temporary employees?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you wanna just take temporary out of that and leave the hiring of the part-time like it was?
Yes, let me see your book, 'cause it says in the book, I didn't, I, in the manual already, it says to hire a part-time employees and temporary employees, I added that in the red, what's in black was already there.
I know, so.
So it's not separated.
I'm just trying to get part-time employees hired.
The hiring of part-time employees, the temporary employees, they have the discretion of the supervisor with mayor approval, is that what you're talking about?
Mm-hmm. So you wanna separate the individuals together already?
No, that's what I was asking, is if you were wanting to separate them, 'cause you're saying that you don't wanna interview every part-time person that comes in, but then you turn around and say that you wanna be involved with the temporary employee appointments, so that's separating the two, the way I understand it.
Okay, so, okay, what I'm saying is, the mayor doesn't just wake up one day and say, I want this part-time person, or that temporary person.
Temporary person.
Either or.
So you're wanting to separate part-time and handle them differently than temporary employees?
No, I wanna handle them the same way.
The way this is worded is that every part-time employee has to go before she counts, I think that's the thing.
The way that's worded.
So if they're cutting grass or if they're running the.
And when he asks, okay, so we were talking about not that individual person, but that position, and I think Rocky asked, if I was talking about the position and asked, if he was talking about the individual, I said position.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, is that the way it's worded though, the hiring of any part-time or temporary personnel has to be approved by the council, that means if we have a position to cut grass, we recommend that that person to the mayor be hired, and then that has to be approved by the council. Is the way that it's worded in the red line. You see, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's, I understand what you're saying, but it, it, you need to just change the wording, what it is, because it's too, it's too broad.
This is the selection hiring process, so this is dealing with the individual employees, this section, not the job descriptions or the job openings, but the people. I don't think we want part-time to have to go before the city council to get approved.
I don't either.
Okay, so just the temporary.
Yeah.
Can we scratch just the part-time out, so we can take out part-time?
But that will still need to be in there somewhere to address the part-time hires as well.
No, go ahead, Sam, go ahead.
Well, just so y'all aren't doing, what page was it on?
Twenty-three.
No, the cut, the description of what is a temporary employee.
Oh, eighteen?
I think you might be picking up, uh, seasonals, yeah.
Seasonal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Aren't, aren't, don't y'all have some pool or seasonal, I think that's considered temporary.
Yeah.
I'm just doing that out there, I'm, I'm not, I gotta get to that page.
It's on page eighteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, read it and see what it says.
Yeah, 'cause you, you're talking temporarys, uh, seasonal, summer, needing more people mowing, whatever, maybe the Christmas hanging Christmas stuff lights, things like that, uh, so that would be temporary positions.
Well, see, it says here, summer and or seasonal employees are considered temporary.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you're putting yourself hiring every.
Lifeguards.
Every, um.
I don't know, I, I, I'm just, tell me if I'm right, what I'm saying, I think is, if any new positions are created, part-time, you know, that's what, we just want to know what they are. So that we can have a say on, you know.
I think what I'm hearing is, I, I don't have any part-time or temporary or seasonal employees. If I decide that, hey, I, I need to get a part-time position.
Created.
To go do my Louisiana One Call locates, I found a guy, I need to create a part-time position because I can work even Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. I don't have that position, so that would be what I come to the council with, to okay that position.
Well, to adopt that, a job description.
Rocky has numerous part-time people.
That are already, that's already on the.
That's already, so y'all aren't wanting to interview those, it's like in my case, if I was to have a new position, that's what y'all wanting to optimize.
So what I'm saying.
Right, just the, just the position.
That's what, I think that's what, that's what I was trying to clarify.
That's what we think we're hearing.
That's why I was trying to clarify what she was saying, I thought, and I understand what she's saying, and I agree. The hiring of part-time employees and temporary employees can stay the way it is right now, but when there's a, a new part-time position created. For some reason or another, I think we would like to be, like to know about that.
I think you'd be to be.
You know, you know. And the temporary positions are like basically seasonal positions and temporary positions.
Yes, right, and they're gonna become and go.
You can cover that, that's what they're on descriptions, if a new position is created, you can put.
I think we're on the same thing, we just.
It increases the total number of employees.
Temporary is not just seasonal, because it also says if a special project needs to be completed, then you can hire someone, but. It's also saying too that summer and seasonal employees are consider, considered temporary, so, you know, it's, it's not seasonal in summer people, so. If we have a special project and we need someone, then that's temporary, they come in, do the job, and then that's it.
Well, it should be worded as special project temporary employees, 'cause like you say, you have the seasonal pools, movers, and stuff like that, you wanna interview all that?
No, that's, it's, it's still, the whole thing is not about us interviewing, it's about us approving the position, on page, here you go, look on page eight, here. You're at page eighteen, I don't think you have.
Is there a difference in what you have to do for a part-time or temporary?
Only have done one temporary employee since I mentioned it.
So, so in your mind, the, the lifeguards are part-time, that's why we're treating them payroll, that was never, and as far as, like, so they've only been the one, and it's.
The only temporary employee I could think of was Mr. Bricker when they were building the recs.
He was part-time.
Was he, yeah, but that would've been a temporary, that was after the.
Yeah, I mean, he, he, he was part-time, but by definition, he was temporary, because he was hired.
He was a project, but still.
He, he didn't work more than thirty-eight, thirty-whatever hours a week.
Yeah.
So he was a temporary employee, like, part-time. Yeah, and I think that's, that's what, what you're referring to, is you see, you know, to some major.
Yeah.
Projects like that, wanted to hire somebody for, work for the city to overwatch.
Yeah.
Y'all would approve that information.
On that last paragraph on twenty-three, could we put who we replaced the hiring of and put the creation of?
Well, this is about hiring, though, not in that section, this section is hiring.
Yeah, this is, this is the wrong section.
Right, so we.
So, so you can dictate a job description on the next page. If you wanna create a new job description for a full-time or a part-time employee that's gonna increase the number of employees in that department.
Should be approved.
It has to go to the city council.
And that's on the next page.
Yeah.
So you need to add, if a new position is created, for full-time or part-time.
Yeah.
Put it in there. Will be developed and presented to the mayor for recommendation to the city council for final approval.
What about temporary?
Well, this'll be a new position with a job description.
Repetitive, what about, what we gonna say about temporary? Well, according to the clerk's office, the payroll says, part-time, doesn't say temporary.
But then they, they need, I would.
So.
Where is the temporary company?
It should say if a new part-time or temporary position is created.
A new position of any type. That would get all of them.
No, we have to have it spelled out.
Well, well, it, a temporary employee, though, is not gonna have a new job description, they're gonna be billing a job description temporarily, so it's not going to, yeah. It's gonna be a job description that's already there.
How many employees do we have temporary now?
I mean, I think he's just.
Just watch the.
How many do we have that's blue on payroll? You sure, you sure it's not part-time?
No, one, one temporary standing right there.
Huh?
There's only one, there's one temporary employee, that's the only one I remember processing.
That's the only one we ever knew about.
So, so, look at the wording for, do you have page twenty-four?
I've got it, thank you.
Yeah, if a new. Position, if a new part-time or temporary position.
Or full. I wonder job description.
Yeah, I'm on the job description.
I just put if a new position, comma, full-time or part-time, was created within the city.
Yeah, that's why I say add part-time.
Idea, full-time or part-time, yeah.
And it was given to the, to, to the personnel, so we leave the personnel committee in there, since we're gonna keep the personnel committee.
The personnel committee is gonna operate as it always has, with exception of the.
Civil service.
Civil service one.
Right, we're not gonna do that anymore, yeah.
Okay, and we're gonna have Mr. Beard as.
The chair.
Chairperson, just like it used to be before. I'm no longer the chairperson, that makes me happy.
Yeah, I don't like it, I have the chair, I'm just gonna be on there.
Pretty stressful job.
So, so, yeah, everyone's okay with that. That, uh, paragraph of job description.
I do have a question about the personnel committee, though, and something that I've been uncomfortable with is when there's a wreck involving city rolling stock. They have to go to the personnel committee, and the personnel committee finds them at fault or not at fault, well, duh, insurance companies gonna have a ball with that one. Whereas before, instead, yeah, he was at fault. I don't think we should do that, wrecks, I don't think we should get involved in wrecks because of potential lawsuits. I mean, what do y'all think? I mean, I, they, I know they're probably.
If you're gonna re-institute or start back up personnel, I, I agree with what Wanda's saying to, to a very large extent. You gonna get the personnel committee and establish that back, Mr. Beard's gonna be the council member, why don't we kick all those details around in personnel committee?
Yeah.
And bring it back to y'all as the council to approve and make policy, instead of trying to break it down here.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like it, well, that's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah. Keep it then, yeah.
Yeah, unless it's something, I mean, deliberately.
Well, you gotta figure out how you're not going to get involved in the fault of it, but you've also, that employee's gonna have to be held accountable too, though, for wrecking a city vehicle, so.
And see, it even goes like, if you got a city vehicle, and that employee's parked there, and that employee's reading a meter or something, and somebody else runs into the door and crashes it in.
Right.
Employee still has to go to the personnel committee.
That's what I was gonna say, I was gonna say negligence, I mean, this negligence act.
And that, and the employee's having to deal with it, he wasn't sitting in the vehicle.
He just was on his phone and ran into a tree, so he's looking at his phone, but anyway.
They're gonna go social media policies, so.
How about co-changers?
Yeah, if you're on holiday, you can come, you're off school.
Nothing else on page twenty-four? So, this, on page twenty-five, all of this that was redlined, so we need to remove the redline?
You know, you didn't say much about that, did you, about the probationary stuff?
Well, the only thing I, I discussed on that was the, uh, probationary reports and all.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's down here, the council will be the final appointment authority, mayor and council, that's a good question on that.
Oh, yes, sir, okay. That should come out.
We, we, we agree with the sixty days.
Yes, sir.
And then the hundred and twenty.
And just we could ask the mayor?
Uh, well, what we've traditionally been doing is we do our progress reports, is, uh, the department head fills them out. And, uh, we go over the employee with them, and then they sign, and they have room for comments and all, and then I bring them to the mayor's office. To get to Wanda to put in their personnel folder.
Well, he has to sign off on it.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, I mean, he signs off on it that, that, that it did happen.
But he done approved and disapproved, he done that already.
Yes, sir.
That's just.
Well, we recommend, we make a recommend.
We make the recommendation, right.
On, on that, on that form, there, there's a spot for probationary period, and, uh, you know, first, second, and final, and on the final, it says continued employee.
Okay.
Or, and, and next for probationary period, something like that.
We can extend probation if they're having, if they're trying and really not performing to, you know, there's a circumstance, you can ask for.
Currently, it gets recommended to the mayor, the probationary body.
Okay, but I can copy those progress reports, do you want to see them?
Okay, yeah. Okay, so just leave that as the mayor take the council up with.
Okay, so we're gonna leave that the way it was?
Put those days, put the first part, the days.
You want the days in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just that last part, these last three lines, you're gonna change that, take that out, but just leave, he said, most of the days are good, sixty-one.
Leave the, leave the days.
Right, I think, what is it now, every two, it's every two months now.
So it just gives you more specifics.
So it's, it's the same, it's just not spelled out, now it's spelled out.
Okay.
But.
And take out the council.
And the same on the next page, 'cause I think that's continuing.
Yeah.
Yeah, just take that out on the next page too.
Yeah.
Leave it up to the.
Um, yeah, after it's been signed and dated, well, the form has a place for the employee to sign it, and if he won't sign it, the supervisor writes in there, employee refused to sign.
And you said usually, if that happens, you guys have somebody that's with you, don't you, and it'd be a good idea, this is, you don't have to be in here, have that person sign it, do they?
Right.
You sign, no, it says, witness, I witnessed this in some.
Right, that's part of the, uh, process, if, if in fact.
So it's at least documented they were presented, may as well.
And, and the, the reason we, we do this and all, and, and, you know, it's hard, we talked about the process of them not understanding. We use this as documentation to make sure, let's say they're having an issue with tardiness.
Yeah.
Their first hire, well, we go over and say, okay, that's when we counsel them, and it's documented that they understand. You know, and what it also does about them for three months, that's right, excellent employee, excellent employee, excellent employee, and then after they get off the probation, I decide I don't like them. They can fall back on this.
Sure.
Y'all can look at, so if they, he's such a bad employee, why was he getting?
Sure.
Good reviews.
Right.
Versus.
Yeah, that's a red flag there.
Right, so that, that kinda gives you, the employees some protection from, uh, uh, supervisor giving a hand tool or something. But it also lets the supervisor, if during that time, we're saying he has trouble getting to work on time, he has been counseled and all. Then, when it becomes a problem and we have discipline, we can fall back on showing that he has been.
Sure.
Counsel, he understood, he's been given adequate chances.
It's all about documentation, I know, I know, in the school system, something like, it was hard to get rid of the teacher.
Right.
I mean, it was, obviously possible, but if you have the documentation, it's a lot easier.
Employee signature and date, I think that's what you said, where it just had signature, you need to have, and date, just like at the top.
That would be for the, as the supervisors about verbals, can y'all give a verbal? You do, you put something in their file that you did a verbal, did you now?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I discussed earlier.
Yeah, you want the boy to sign that.
But I think you said it didn't have anything about the date on that, it just said the signature.
On, 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 on page twenty-seven.
Yeah, yeah.
It's got two different things, one says signed and dated by the employee, and the other just says with the employee's signature. And we just felt that they should be the, whatever you decide.
We need to add the date.
Yes, ma'am, and that way they're both consistent.
Yeah, that's what I'm. Add the date.
So the same thing, and Rio put the same thing down.
Sure, the dated employee.
Okay, so before you put it in their file, 'cause that's not coming to me, that stays out there at your place, right, those verbals?
Mm-hmm, it is, yeah, yeah.
So, the employee will, that will be dated, the employee will sign your verbals?
I thought some verbals.
I've never seen one.
I thought he said his counseling. His counseling.
Counseling doesn't, but a verbal does.
Yeah. So it needs to be signed, you want that signed and dated by the employee also.
Counseling, I use the same employee warning sheet.
I'll put that right here.
And we go through the same process.
But you just hang on to that.
I hang, I give them the copy if they want it.
Sure.
It's just the original stays in their folder and.
And that's just to help them out, so they know when their personnel.
Correct.
Yeah, and I, I.
That, that shows documentation of the step we took.
That you did talk to them, but you.
To try to do the right thing.
Just trying to help them.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so if I do, if I do counseling or, or anything like that, but if I go to a verbal, then it's filled out.
Right.
Okay. I'll put that same verdict down there and then watch, have it on a ship.
All righty. Looking back at the, the part-time and temporary positions, I guess the biggest difference would be that part-time employees are eligible for unemployment benefits. And temporary positions are not.
I don't know about that.
No, we said on page eighteen, okay. All righty.
The labor board probably disagrees with that, the labor board's playing with the.
Well, so temporary could be either a part-time person or a full-time person working, uh.
Temporary side.
Temporary side.
Yeah, defined time, length of time. Well, when people, see, and that's how we get into this, when people are hiring, oh, we need to know if they're part-time or if they're temporary, because, and here it says temporary employees. Do not qualify, or not eligible for benefits.
That's why we need to have an attorney that's familiar with, you know, labor laws and things like that, to make sure that we're correct.
I don't know if that's true today, okay.
If you're not, if it's described in this name.
So they're not eligible for part-time or temporary, not eligible for.
So it's just temporary.
Uh, and it's benefits like for full-time employees, no insurance, no unemployment.
Yes.
No insurance, so it's, yeah, to make insurance off of that unemployment.
Okay, temporary, okay, all right, um, so, we're down to class one.
Is that gonna go back to the way it was with the personnel committee?
Oh, no, we need, we need to go back, we need to add something. Um, the supervisor's having the ability to send. Um, the supervisors having the ability to send someone home for a cool-off period, we need to add it with pay.
With pay.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, where's that?
And, and we probably need to come up with a timeframe, we can't send them home for a week with pay, but I think a twenty-four hour period would be sufficient. Cool-off period, you have time to notify the mayor, council, you know.
Two days?
Something like that.
Okay, cause we need to be.
Or until reviewed by the mayor or something.
Uh, and or.
But, I, so my understanding was, and you say until it's reviewed by the mayor, but my understanding was, hey, something that's happening, maybe two employees that have had some words, and you just want them to go home so the situation does not escalate.
There's probably more than words, it's probably gonna be.
Well, now, if they saw it's light, then they'll be terminated.
Yeah, that's right, we're trying to prevent that.
That's right, that's right.
And a cool-off period should be the rest of the workday.
Yeah, that's what I.
But if, if they've got caught stealing something and they know they're gonna be terminated, you know.
They're gonna cause damage.
Why would send them home?
That, that, that's the problem that we have right now, you have a couple of different situations, but, but you catch an employee that's doing something blatantly unsafe, or
Illegal.
whatever, illegal, it doesn't matter, right now, the supervisor does not have the authority to do anything to that employee immediately, to stop the situation until you go to the mayor.
Okay.
And what, what we're saying is, give, give the supervisors the authority to stop what's going on with pay until reviewed by the mayor, good or bad, it doesn't mean that there's gonna be an action taken, but if we send somebody home with pay for, for preventing, y'all two are, are battling amongst yourselves and he's getting louder, getting louder with the ag, now you gotta go off, y'all assist him, but I need to be responsible to somebody when I do that.
And that's fine, we're just trying to determine, you know, if it, is it the rest of the day, the workday, you know, the time period that
Oh, for the length of, of.
Yeah.
Well, I.
But then, even, even until it's something, you know, the mayor, but what about the personnel committee, since we're going to keep the personnel committee, so it will go to the personnel committee or?
Well, well, for example, somebody steals something, you send them home, I look at it, I investigate it, I ask, I even maybe call the employee at home or something, say, hey, duh, 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 and then I, yeah, he needs to be terminated, and then it goes to the personnel committee.
And it could be involving his department, Steve's department.
That probably works in civil service.
It could be, no, 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 listen to what I'm saying, he could have criminal charges against one of my employees, that's gonna cost him his job, if this guy knows, or female knows they're gonna be fired, I get to looking for them, they're laying in the bathroom floor, slipped and fell and hurt their back, so now, we got this lawsuit that they got hurt on the job, we can't do nothing till all that's settled. That, that's what I'm trying to protect the city.
The whole thing is just to remove them from the situation till we can take care to get it to where it needs to be, and then we can go.
So, but to answer, but maybe to answer your question, and I think I under, I, I don't think I understood you want to go, but I think I do that, I think some verbiage that we have the authority to send an employee home with pay until reviewed by the mayor, whether that's an hour or two days.
Yeah.
Until reviewed by the mayor not to extend.
Yeah, a certain time, forty-eight.
I mean, because if he's out of town, then he's sent to the employee, he's at home for a week, just relaxing, getting paid, so, you know.
Well, but, but, and you're, you're right, but listen, and, and I'm, I'm gonna use an example here of, of, we have something happen, and y'all, y'all were at LMA.
Okay.
Okay, and he's in some major conference and can't get out that day. But, once I text him or call him, it may be a day or two before he gets back and is out of pockets that much, and the mayor pro tem is the one that's got to be acting. It shouldn't be but a couple, a day or two.
The mayor's supposed to, the mayor pro tem. So you're innocent until proven, you.
Well, no, if you just like this here.
It's gonna be null and jeopardy, you can't, they don't terminate you, they don't on the pay, they don't pay you.
The other way this seems like lately.
Julie, the way it works is like, if you text me with the problem, just like the other day, I was at the LMA conference, we're all sitting at the table, I got up and walked out, called you right back with the dick.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, with technology that we have.
It may be immediate, and it may, it may be a day or two.
But, but, but probably two days would be enough.
Maybe they should come up with the verbiage and present it to us.
Yeah.
And tell us where to.
And we can.
Well, it's going, it's, it's going in the disciplinary action section.
Would it come right here, under, yeah, right before, after admonishment, it seemed like it could fit there.
That's why I asked.
Cause you've got, you've got disciplinary actions, admonishment, then you could have right under that, an employee supervisor could, you know, have that right to send them to home with.
On, on the job contract. So just kind of write down what, you know, what needs to go there, and then you can come up with the verbiage when we look, you know.
You know, like I say, sometimes we've got two good employees that just had a bad day. It, it, it's worth it for me to pay them for a couple of hours to get them home, cool off.
To work it out, to keep.
And keep it from escalating.
Sure.
If they come back with the same issues, then we move forward.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't see why we couldn't send them home for the remainder of that day with pay, and let them come back tomorrow, if their attitude's better, they can stay, if it's not, then you need to take disciplinary action.
Well, that works in that scenario, but if you've got a situation where you're worried about them for liability reasons. But the thing about the, here's the thing, just, just like what, what Bo was saying here, if you've got two good employees, bad day.
Yeah.
All right, we send them home for the rest of the day, we still, mayor, look, I, I, I sent these two guys home with pay for the rest of the day to cool off, I think they're gonna be fine in the morning, I don't wanna pursue anything else with them, is that okay with you? Yep, that's fine, it's nothing.
It'd still be.
It still goes with some of their balances and checks, what we're doing.
If you've got two employees in each other's face, say, hey, get over there and do your job, and you get over there and do your job, and then if that doesn't diffuse it, then.
Yeah. I mean, wouldn't it be, it'd be something.
It's just actually doing it to work together.
Yeah. Yeah.
You can't send, you can't separate.
I'm old with the other one.
We send them home.
It does, but, you know, it, it has.
We don't have the authority.
Yes, I must have that option.
We're being proactive.
It's good to have that option.
Well, I don't know what the gist of it is, the supervisor can send an employee home with pay for the remainder of the workday for a cool-off period, I don't know.
Well, you fix the purpose of it.
But that's the gist of it, you know.
Okay.
And something about until, you know, the point, and that it will be addressed by the mayor.
And if there's something legal about that, Mr. Minifair will.
And, and, and can't, can't be confined to cool-off period, cause if it's like we discussed, let's say, I got an employee that knows Steve's gonna send a guy down there and arrest him for a felony, and he knows he's just gonna lose his job, well, he could cause the city a lot of liability in the time, and Steve's probably gonna call me and say, hey, is Joe at work today, we got a warrant for his arrest, you know, and so, if I hear that, I'll say, yes, and, and we can kind of mitigate a possible issue.
Yeah, we just leave cool-off period off.
First word gets out that they got a warrant for the arrest, and it gets from the city truck.
I mean, we can't talk about two employees that can't get along, but there are other issues too, when you tell someone not to use a tool a certain way, and they just do it anyway, and it's dangerous, that's not a cool-off, that's, that's, that's because, you know, I need you to go because you're fixing to cause an accident, and then we're gonna deal with it.
That's right, that's what I'm saying, it's a bad term.
Right, so we just leave that off.
And Bo can probably, I don't know, right?
Yes, sir, if there's two involved, that's why I felt important to do the pay, because it's not fair if somebody comes over pesterin' you, and you lose your temper.
Yeah.
And I, you, I, I walk in, see you raising cane, not him, you know, and then I pass around.
Two sides of different schools.
Right.
Three.
What can, what can believe in the time be at the supervisor's discretion in this situation? Like for liability reasons, if you think they might slip and fall because they've got a warrant for their arrest, and now they're in jail, but at least they're getting or caught from.
We wanna authorize the supervisors to able to send an employee home with pay for the remainder of the workday till the situation's resolved. Now, if you still have a situation the next morning, you can write them up.
Well, just say, for the remainder of the day, that can be extended by the.
Mayor, if he sees fit.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
For the remainder of the day, that would give us time to take it to the mayor and say, hey, this is what's going on, and then he can extend this.
Cause it may happen at four o'clock, three-thirty, so.
It could be at supervisor's discretion until it's overruled by the mayor of the personnel. So like if, if supervisor sends you home for two days, and the mayor says, well, no, that's too much, he's, they're probably fine now, and then they come back the second day.
Well, there's still a problem when they come back the next day, they need written up.
Again, it depends on what the issue is, if we're talking about two employees fighting, yes, obviously, or if they're using, abusing a tool or something, yeah, but if it's a situation with liability, you can't write them up because we're worried they might slip and fall and hurt themselves. It's, it's a radical.
Here's, you're sending the employee.
Let's just put anything of that, put that in the question.
Yeah.
If you think they're stealing, or something like that.
At least they're not stealing for one day, but they'll come back the second day and steal.
Yeah, and that.
You're not gonna thank it, you're gonna have proof.
Probably, probably by that one year.
I mean, the thing about, we've, we've got, it seems like it's a little off track, because we've used the word cool-off period, and, and that's done got kind of convoluted into things, the problem is, is if we have an employee that does something blatantly wrong that's in the, in the manual, that could be ground for leave without pay or termination, right now, you know, by, by whatever means we're gonna terminate, right now, the supervisor has to come, call the mayor, find the mayor, and, and even though ninety-nine percent of the time, they're gonna be readily available, what about that one particular time where he's not readily available? Myself and Mo and several other, we've seen those times through, through the years, we have no authority to do anything to diffuse the situation, only the mayor does, and what we're saying, give us the time where we can send somebody home with pay until normal process takes place with the mayor to say.
I think that's clear, that's clear, man, that is very clear, and it's on here, and I think we all understood that, I think the problem was how long? And that was the question.
Until.
Yeah, and so that.
Until it gets to the mayor.
That needs to be put in, good, so they're not home for a whole week with pay, waiting on something to happen.
If it's termination or something like that, then, then personnel comes in and play and all that, but it starts with money.
Yeah, so just put that in there, till it's addressed by the mayor, in a speedy manner, or whatever, you gotta put in there. All right. But that's the thing, make sure you guys have that authority to do that.
I'm sitting here thinking about these employee warning reports that I've seen, where a situation like that occurs, and the supervisor says, I sent the employee home and recommend without, leave without pay for three days, and the time started when they sent them home.
So you've seen reports where they did send them home, even though they didn't have the authority to do it?
Did they ever go to that?
Hmm.
No, no, it was an employee warning report.
And they shouldn't be going home, be, for three days without pay on employee warning reports.
Well, you, sure, didn't, didn't they clarify that?
Well, because class one offense, it.
Yeah, that's a good person. So, how are they doing without one person? Exactly. So, that brings us to class one offense, on page twenty-seven, um.
Well, until.
You looking at for the third violation, can't, is that what you're looking at?
Class one.
Yeah, I was gonna say the class one, for the third violation, they're sent home without pay. So that's a different scenario than that.
Right.
That's a disciplinary thing that we're following, one, two, three, so that's okay.
That's, that's.
Yeah, what we're talking about is, is a, is an emerging type of situation, that's what we're doing.
And that one did have.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah, so that one's okay, if it's written that way and you're unaware of it, I think, my opinion is. Get to the third violation now.
Okay, so, when we revised employee name with the hiring of civil service employees, we didn't say anything about the termination. We took out the personnel committee with the hiring, but we didn't take out the personnel committee with the termination of civil service employees, so how do we want to go about that?
I thought we took personnel committee out on all issues involving.
No, we, when we talked about it, the mayor said, no, right now, we're just focused on the hiring of the civil service employees, take the personnel committee out of that, but, we had the cases pending, so that's why nothing was done with the termination with the personnel committee, the termination of civil service employees.
Oh, you're, you're, you're talking about what was done back in April?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I was thinking today, we have, we have agreed that the personnel committee would not be involved with civil service personnel period.
Yeah, who, had, kind of.
Had got to that yet.
No. So, do we want to, uh, the personnel committee, should they, should they come out when it comes to the termination of the city, I mean, the civil service employees, since they're not involved with the hiring?
Uh, the last time we tried to do that, we were, we were advised by council to not make any kind of recommendations or anything, to pass it directly on to the council.
So, the personnel committee should come out?
Not be involved with civil service.
I mean, for civil service personnel, doesn't need to have anything, that's because they are, they've already made the recommendation downstairs from the civil service board to go to the council.
That's not, that's not what happened.
Civil service board.
Yeah.
No, it's not the board. No.
On termination?
They should, probably.
Well, they, they, they can appeal this decision of the council to the civil service.
Yeah, you appeal the civil service.
Right.
So it's just on, on your recommendation to terminate?
Well, the, the, this last two that we gave was, that's, I, cause we still had personnel in play, I sent it up to Ms. Wanda to bring them before the personnel.
And they just skipped it, sent it on, so it doesn't need to be there.
Yeah, basically, it was gonna have to go to council anyway, we didn't even hear it, we just passed on it.
Like right here, under fire police personnel, so without pay until acted upon by the personnel committee and city council, just needs to be taken out, personnel committee, acted on by the city council, right, cause it's gonna skip you guys, you guys, us, it's gonna skip us anyway when it gets to the personnel committee.
Plus then they can appeal to the civil.
Sure, like it has to, at least that happens, so.
Right here.
Personnel needs to be out of that.
Yeah.
Right here it says acted upon by the mayor and council, so it needs to be just the council?
Right.
Wait, that's something different.
I'm on page twenty-seven, I'm still at the third there.
That's for the third violation of a class one offense within twelve months, the employee suspended without pay until acted upon by.
That needs to be in the personnel.
By the mayor, just the mayor there.
Okay.
Because if they've gotten three write-ups in a twelve-month period, we need to go home without, that's a norm.
That's true.
We don't wanna have to call a council meeting to make that happen.
Okay.
Um, so, now the strikeout, that stays the same, strikeout personnel committee.
Right, right, I think your next sentence is right on.
Yeah, okay. Do you want some water? Um, so when we look at the fences, we have low fin, ready to notify the supervisor, you see the fences, so, my question is about social media. So, when is.
Social media policy.
When the, uh, civil service employees post something that's inappropriate, like, I know we got an email. Wrong, you tell you check your email in the last few days.
I'm not sure what you're talking about. About?
Something that we posted. Do you want some water?
No, I'm gonna be here in the morning, I can't, in the morning. The email is. I sent three samples to Carl for him to give me the wording, I haven't heard from him. I'll put Kyle Ward's. Before me asking him if he's gonna do the wording for office window, I sent the word proclamations to show him. But I mean, if you're.
For me as being, he's gonna do the wording for office window, I sent the word proclamations to show him. But I mean, if you'll give me something, I'll.
I don't really know what I'm going for.
All right, there you go.
Somebody's got him, so. I don't know anything about him.
I have, I have.
You, with the titties on, you feel that on that view screen?
I'll arrange tomorrow when I ask people to get some.
And in the meeting, um, tonight, I'll submit to.
The old tree, you said. It's still some.
Okay, okay. Yeah, awesome, actually. So, I'm just saying, we need to make sure this is handled somewhere because. It seems to me to. So what claims? Until that happens, until the policy is put in place. Maybe. Maybe we need to, there's some examples, any social media, no, that's.
Until y'all give a policy.
Okay. I send them to.
Cause that's it, I'll read it.
Yeah, okay. I'll be here, I'll be here too. So now, page, we are, um.
You ready to go?
Do. Steve, are you looking at the, um, pages, wrong page twenty-eight?
Mr. Bradford, I understand. He said you're ready to go.
Okay.
What time is it? Four thirty.
Someone is wrong overtime?
We don't make overtime.
Yeah.
Um, the only, well, we have dated red, but we need the days to be. Need the number of days that they will be suspended. You know, it's not specified.
Are you talking about just like for, for your, it might depend on what the offense is.
Yeah, there's two offenses, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it says number of days to be determined by mayor and council.
Well, I mean, that, that kinda, you know, if, if it's your second red, and it's your fault, you know. You, you'll get more than twenty-four hours to think about it, I mean, especially if it's the second one in six months, because it probably takes a lead up to you losing your job.
Can you do up to seven days?
Yeah.
Would that be the max?
Yeah, and, and, and give yourself a window, and that'd give personnel ti- time to look at it and everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Be worth of suspended, the number of days to, no, uh, the number of days to be determined by the mayor and to the council.
Uh, the number of days up to seven?
And that's for regular employees paying fire personnel to different paragraphs, suspension without pay.
Not exceed seven days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is the red staying in? Is the council gonna be involved in offenses?
Not if you're gonna do this.
Personnel.
Personnel.
I know.
For civil service? We thought we were taking personnel out first.
Civil, personnel, all, all civil services have been taken out of personnel, your personnel committee was paid.
So.
Right, not all. They can put, uh, this for driving offenses.
For driving offenses?
I don't know yet.
The, the personnel committee for.
I mean, I think kind of.
Yeah, but no, they're talking about having all civil service issues go directly to the council, not, not that they would not be dealt with, but that they wouldn't be dealt with by the personnel.
And, and, and that's what happened this year, I think almost every one of them went to the, the, the committee, and they said, we skipped and went to us.
Because it said that we had to send it to the council anyway, so why should we hash them out and make them go through it?
So it's gonna have to go through with the council.
So it's just a paragraph with the employee something?
Yeah. So we remove the personnel committee from anything that has been the civil service.
Yeah.
And.
Make sure it's accounted with us. Let's go back up to that first par- paragraph under class two, is it stating as red line?
Actually, take all the red line out and go back to what it was.
It put personnel. Well, it wasn't.
Personnel right there.
It didn't have personnel there. For the.
Yeah.
It used to.
Well, yeah.
A long time ago.
Yeah, that one got removed, you just didn't get removed, you're looking at.
Okay, so are we going back to the personnel committee with class two offenses? Think so. Somewhere in there, maybe, maybe after sex, class two offense, do you wanna do excluding civil service? Just as in a paragraph, I mean, in parentheses? But they have their own.
They have their own paragraph, yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, and personnel committee is always stretched out on my.
And just, yeah, indeed, it has to be.
So that just needs to not exceed seven, but.
Yeah.
Okay, so how is the class two offense gonna read in the top, the violation of a class two offense? You probably have to go back to your old manual, what personnel. Yeah, I'm gonna have to go back and see, I'll just pull out the old manual, see how it must have been.
If you just take out. The red, then. It was, it didn't have personnel committee in there.
Was it in there?
No.
No, it's not here, we're looking at.
It wasn't in there.
No, not, not necessarily, it was the previous.
Y'all, y'all took that.
Well, it was.
Whenever we hear this, when they're action, we can, can say that it's a class two offense in personnel committee, and then that's what happens. If we deem it as a class two offense, right?
Well, we can just leave it a paragraph like it is. Like it is in ours, and it doesn't have personnel committee in it.
So take the red out.
Yeah, yeah.
We take, we take very soon, we do, yeah.
For the violation of a class two offense.
Subject to mayor, on, is our organization, audit their employee, we go.
Remember the days to be recommended by the mayor?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed seven.
Seven days.
Okay.
Seven working days.
Yeah. And then when you get to the next paragraph where it talks about fire.
Just take personnel committee out.
Yeah.
Out of the.
Yeah, leave it like you have it then, right?
Yeah.
Leave it like you have it.
Yeah, she's gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah, where it says determined by mayor and city council.
Yeah.
Does that clarify that, I, that's what.
Well, if.
Does that mean we had to have a council meeting to?
That was a question on a lot of this.
Right, everywhere it says mayor and city council, how do we get the mayor and city council in agreement to make a decision?
Was the word is council?
Do we have to go to a council meeting and have a, a vote?
I think that the first class two offense just needs to be the mayor, then if it gets worse than that, they'll go to the personnel committee.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Not the fire.
Not the fire.
Not the fire.
Oh, well, he's gonna counsel, right, right, but the first one does a.
You go to counsel.
Should an employee violate any class two offense within twelve-month period, the employee shall be suspended with, without pay until acted upon by the city council.
Right.
Yeah.
So, let me get, if, so if, uh, well, my guy's driving a fire truck, running hot to a fire scene. Turns a corner a little too early or whatever, and has a little fender bender, okay, so that, that goes to the city council?
No.
Oh, it does, because.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, because he does have personnel.
Yeah, they go personnel, go city council.
Yeah.
I, I'm just getting.
And that, and that's, like, Rick brought a good point, how, how, how that, I mean, what is the process of that gonna be? I mean, if I, and we, my guy did call it up all the time, uh.
The chief just has to call the mayor's office, and mayor puts it on the next council meeting, or calls a special meeting, or whatever.
Go to another council meeting, okay, but, but that, you would go in exactly the same.
Yeah. Yeah.
You would be able to, yeah.
I get, I would think so.
I think it requires you don't let the chief of police and the fire chief handle those the way they want to, and if they think they need to be disciplined, they'll discipline them.
Why don't we, why don't we find out?
Well, it wasn't written anyway before any changes were made, so it wasn't written, I think, so.
What other? Why don't we find out what other municipalities do? I mean, I, I can't hardly believe every dent and every scratch goes to city council to tie all this.
They probably go to their H R.
I think they, they walk down there, lawnmower, he turns, not paying attention, he scratches the side of the car on one of those posts, we gotta have a council meeting on that, no.
Yeah.
So the way it's written, that's what it, yeah.
But, but way, way, before we go to, they go personnel, that's, that's done away with, so, well, I'm gonna go to the council, then.
I mean, and, and, and you're probably not gonna wanna do it this way.
Or you could, or you could put a motor.
Or we could do what?
Add motor vehicle incidents to class one offense. Well, you have a different section for the rolling stock.
Yeah, that's actually a different section.
Maybe that will solve some of the problems.
Well, doesn't everyone, including fire and police, go to personnel unless it's a class three of termination type conversation?
Why don't you do, why don't you do it like this, if they have a scratch or something like that, see, and y'all investigate it, and you write it up, bring it to the mayor's office.
If it deems.
Look at it, approve it, if it happens again, then it, then it's habitual thing, then it goes to the council.
Yeah, I think it would be a judgment, you guys are part, if it's something that's just not as minor, you guys can handle that, but if it's something that, yeah, looks, it needs to be addressed by us.
Cause I've had both, you know, I've had a work where they.
Yeah.
Their phone fell off of somebody or anything, and it ran into a post.
Yeah.
I mean.
And then I've had guys going on a ca- a hot call, and, you know, even though they're running hot, they still gotta make sure that intersection's clear before you go through it.
Sure, sure.
And my officer didn't, and caused a wreck, which was major damage to our vehicle and the other vehicle.
Yeah, that's pretty significant, that, that, that has to be.
Yeah.
Since covered in the whole section?
Those pages that, Ken.
Page thirty.
Some disciplinary action runs driving offenses and accidents.
And it talks about suspension without pay?
Page thirty, no, it's not, it's not on what Mr. Walker.
It's on mine.
It's on page thirty. And it shows the different offenses, and it's a separate area for fire and police.
That would be all, all vehicles.
Yeah, now that.
And it's still showing fire police, fire personnel.
For vehicle.
For vehicle.
Any other personnel issues would go directly to the council.
Is it defined as vehicle?
Yeah.
And what's a vehicle?
It's just where the vehicle is.
Yeah, then we just come out on this page.
So if one of my guys runs over a runway light on a lawnmower, now we gotta go to the personnel committee to.
Okay, well, just leave it, uh, driving offenses and accidents, go to personnel committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Still excessive.
Yeah, got you, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, that goes back to me saying, we're gonna say they were in, at fault, so if somebody else was involved in that accident, we've already said, yeah, we were at fault. That doesn't look good.
All driving offenses and accidents, well, what's wrong with it is it says as determined by the administrative assistant. You, you shouldn't determine anything, if it's a driving offense, then it goes to the personnel, the mayor, then the personnel committee.
What we, what we used to determine was, if he was just, and, and this has happened, somebody had, had the car parked legally, reading the meter or something, you know, and somebody came up and hit it. Well, that wasn't an employee's fault, we didn't take it to personnel, cause he was not at fault in any way, shape, or form.
He was the victim.
I just turned over any tricks and taking care of it, were they, were they?
Yeah, I'm seeing, seeing.
But that's why.
The reason they went to her is because she is acting as H R in that capacity.
No, we shouldn't go to her.
Well, there's not anybody else to make that decision.
The mayor.
Yeah, both of us made it together, I, I didn't, and he signed off on it.
So, I just don't. Yeah, I just, um.
It's a law of responsibility, you've got.
I don't think you should be in here as determined by it.
I'm, I'm sure she'd be glad to take her.
That's what I'm saying, it takes a lot of responsibility out of you.
Well, it's just put it on the mayor, and then it's go with the personnel committee, take the council out.
By the personnel committee as determined by the mayor.
Yeah.
They can use this discretion, I mean, if it's like what you say, it, it would be.
By the personnel committee.
Because if it's a law.
But if it's negligence, he.
Issue, then he's gonna have to deal with it anyway, so let him make the determination, so.
Maybe if it's negligence, he's gonna refer that to the personnel committee.
So the rest of that paragraph is good.
Yeah, take out council.
Just take me out of it, okay.
Take council out.
Yeah, right.
It's not on there, it's what is on.
I mean, the rest of it was okay before changes, all right.
Yeah.
I think rolling stock should be defined, you know, rolling stock incident should be able to.
It's on page thirty.
On page thirty, same page, same paragraph.
I was wondering that because that should be what we were talking about.
I think it should be defined, and I think the supervisor should have some discretion there, because if, if I'm mowing.
That's what I'm saying, anything with wheels on, it's rolling stock.
That's on the stock, so we need to have a definition, like lawnmowers, bicycles, you know, tractors.
Or anything traversing a public roadway.
Yeah, if you're, if somebody, if somebody. If you run back, go down the street, and you run into the side of the car, that's gonna be a different situation.
Right.
Running over a, facing right of the, right of way.
Class three.
Right. If somebody crashes a riding mower, I don't wanna have a personnel committee.
Or, or if they run over, you know, they're gonna be cutting the right of way, and they run over somebody's bushes by accident. By definition, this would have to go to the council.
That needs to be.
Right, yeah, cause it's rolling stock.
All right.
It's rolling stock, and it's an incident where damage incurred, you know, cause it's grandma's favorite flower or whatever, you know, so. So, I, I, I think there needs to be some discretion from the department head there, uh, I'm sure Frank can be in front of the council every month, you know.
Sure.
On lawnmowers.
Sure.
You know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, those, those guys in there, you know, drive, you do it at your house, run over a rock, swing a rock out.
In the situation.
Exactly. And so we have to have a committee according to this.
Recommend you have a, a, a terminal appeal procedures available.
There needs to be a, a definition of what it is, from what we're gonna deal with.
Right.
Fire and police.
I think it should be something habitual, should come to, to be addressed, it's habitual. Like, for instance, if there's an area where they're mowing close traffic, and all they gotta do is mow from north to south, so the discharge pushes away from traffic. They've been told, they continuously go from south to north, and are hitting cars every time they mow that area, I, I would think that's habitual, so the, the supervisor should address that and bring it to the personnel.
And that's gonna fall under employee discipline here, actually, that really, because they're just refusing to do what they're told, whether it's with a lawnmower or a shovel.
Right. If, if Eric's got a guy with a truck hoe, and they're digging up a water line and hit a gas line, that would have to come for definition to the council.
Yeah, because that's, you got wheels on it.
It's rolling stock, and it caused damage, you know, so.
So, in, in this paragraph right here is referring to, um, I'm on page thirty-one, but they're talking about the rolling stock. Uh, the employee has to submit to an immediate drug test. So, so, right here when you say define rolling stock, so is that where you want to maybe insert parentheses, uh?
Rolling stock will be defined as, or, or will go to, what will go to the personnel committee, is that what you're saying, specify, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, look now, I had an employee turn a tractor over.
They were.
And he was drug tested in fact. To hit something, you don't want them to go take a drug test, they run over bush, you know, I mean.
Well, I mean, and that, that's the thing, but it, you get, you can get somebody down into this, you know, I'm just gonna give you another example. If, if I've got, if we're out working on a, on a water line, and they're taking a chunk of concrete, putting it in the back of the dump truck. And you get up there, and when you dump it out. It's gonna dent the truck. It's gonna happen. It's what is, you know. Do we want they come up to the ca- I mean, my guys couldn't even work, you know, you're shutting, you're shutting your crew down.
Right.
You're throwing that, that particular.
It's a dump truck.
Yeah. But the way it's stated, rolling stock, damage to rolling stock, so you have to get in there and start making wires.
Could you add on there, could you add on there the discretion of the supervisor, someone?
Yeah.
Involved in rolling stock.
Yeah.
Now, licensed vehicles on a motorway is a whole different thing.
Yeah.
It's a whole different situation.
And what I see out of it is about the drug test.
Yeah, the discretion of the city, and so.
So, we have, I guess, I'm, we're in two different places on this, because where I'm looking when it's talking about the rolling stock. Immediately after that, it talks about the drug test, it's not saying anything about going to the council, so I'm still stuck on this point, you're talking about personnel committee and everything else, so.
Yeah, we were talking about that when y'all were talking about something else, you're talking about not every single thing that deals with wheels on it needs to come to personnel.
But the thing about it is, in this handbook, you're not gonna be able to deal with every tiny little situation.
Every.
Well, that's not it, first sentence is as determined by you, whether or not it should go on.
That's what I'm saying, just like the guy that had the dented door, no, we're not gonna drug spring him.[1790.21]
Yeah, it says all driving offenses and accidents, as determined by the mayor, will be reviewed by personnel committee, so if he determines that, like what he was talking about, it's not need to come to us, it's not a problem, this employee wasn't negligent, then it doesn't come to the personnel committee.
A, a dent in a dump truck bed is not gonna come to us.
Right, right, right. Right, right, or running over somebody's bushes.
Over a gas line.
Somebody's bushes, and he's gonna deal with that and deal with it, and that person, if they're not happy, they're gonna come to a council meeting and get in our face, then we're gonna deal with it. So there's other things that have to be handled, not being too specific.
Yeah, I think you'd have to get in there and start, I, I understand what your, your.
Just too big.
Yeah, cause the beginning really doesn't say, it's at the discretion of the city, I don't see, like, how we got into all the other stuff, because it's at the discretion right now, it's talking about drug testing, this, it was, it says, it says at the discretion, I thought maybe yours said something different from mine.
Yeah. And, and I'm just gonna say that, mayor, you contact me and say, this is what happened, and, I, 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 and then he's gonna say, uh, personnel committee, I'm gonna look at it, go, no, I don't think so. I personally don't think that's something we need to look at, and then he, you can handle it, mayor, you know?
Well, that's, that's one of these situations, though, where, where this actually kinda contradicts itself in a way, the, the sentence prior to says, any accident.
Yeah.
involving city people, rolling stock, immediate, immediate drug test, the second sentence, alcohol test, will be advised, discretion.
Immediate drug. Says alcohol test. At discretion. So it needs to be both.
You know.
That's what I said.
You say you have alcohol test, I mean, if you smell beer or something on your breath, when I said I was doing alcohol testing.
Right.
That was in that fire too. I'm just saying, I was like, I can touch that, so what?
Can I say something?
Well, and I have to say, I think drug test is pretty much standard in the industry, when I worked for Clayburn Electric, yes, well, I worked for Clayburn Electric, I didn't know what I was doing, but anyway. Uh, I had an accident, it wasn't my fault, somebody hit me in a company car, and I had to go do a drug test, so it was just policy, you know?
Yeah.
And I was free and clear, but, you know, so that's kinda used to be in there, I guess, the drug test thing, I would think.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, can I say something on that? Okay, I don't know, uh, I do concrete work, with, with heating on, but, uh, on this drug test, I, I noticed that. Whenever a person get hurt on a job, except, I mean, no cheese, and wetting it, and cheese get hurt, and I'm wetting that side of cheese, and cheese go to the hospital, where I supposed to go to be drug tested too. That's the way the insurance cut it now, now, look at it.
Yeah.
But that's the way they got it now.
That's why it should be mandatory, yes, sir.
Right.
Right. If every city.
I have to go be drug tested.
Sure, it's a factor, they might get drug tested if something goes wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
That's great, yeah.
The whole reason behind it is we want to encourage them not to do drugs.
So.
Well, that's good, y'all.
Basically, we need to remove one of those sentences.
Well, and alcohol case would be.
Medical.
And you say you're drunk.
I mean, you say drug.
Yeah, alcohol, they don't find it.
When they go to get a, uh, when I send an employee to be drug tested, they have an accident, and I send them to be drug tested. The company usually calls me and asks, do you want us to do an alcohol also? And if I don't have any suspicion, I say no.
They don't automatically do drug and alcohol?
No.
No, it, that's one of the sentences there.
They don't.
Oh, see, I didn't know it.
They just do one.
It's a good idea, thanks, sir.
Well, I mean, you don't be on your bill.
Yeah, that's what you're gonna tell.
Well.
I know, I mean, you're gonna be able to.
Well, and you have to, you have to. You know, your employees, you might know a little bit about that person having that problem, so, yeah, I think you're gonna ask, you know that.
I know, I mean.
And usually you can smell it on them or their actions or whatever.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay, so that makes sense now.
So leave that at discretion.
At discretion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so, down to the next paragraph, uh, take the council out, leave this personnel committee, okay? Before the red line, go ahead and say.
Uh, one thing, uh, Chief said, when we were talking about disciplinary actions, we, the, uh, body count, so, he said the first offense would be a write-up, right? The second offense, so maybe under number twenty, you need to bullet that, you know, first offense, just a write-up, what's going to happen?
Okay, on page thirty, are we leaving number twenty in there?
No, bullet, did you say?
No, we skipped, no, we skipped this one.
We did, we skipped, we have to come back, so, again, we believe number twenty, and then add the bullet, it's like, first offense, just a write-up, the second.
Well, I don't know where we are.
Number twenty.
Page thirty.
Page thirty, she, it's a red line.
Okay, well, yeah, that's where I was, okay.
We'll leave number twenty.
Mm-hmm.
And then the first offense, and just be specific as to what's going to happen, it's not what is automatic termination, but the first offense will be a write-up.
And you said?
Was three days off without pay, is what you said? Okay, and the third offense is termination, okay?
That sounds fair. So just put these three bullets once on number twenty, okay?
What do you think the, uh, if, if we follow this here, on the third, the third offense, we terminate him, tell me how the civil service board is gonna react to that. That we're gonna get over.
They have a right to feel it.
Yeah, they got, they can beatle him.
Yeah, and so, that's just the way it goes, though, we have to have some kinda something to follow.
But there's gonna be documentation there.
Or, if one of those. The third offense recommended termination.
Yeah, recommended termination.
Okay, recommended termination.
Yeah, that, that might be better.
Yeah.
And then we'll follow.
But like Pam say, you had a documentation, okay, so, this is, you're kind of habitual with this, so.
And that will be presented to the, to the civil service board.
Be careful, actually, they're not.
With the documents, but civil service board would probably follow that, follow our recommendation more closely, with documentation.
With all that documentation. Yeah.
Yeah, if you're documenting real well.
So, on page thirty one, we talked, we, we talked about that, and then just taking that council and leaving, uh, personnel committee.
Can you go back to page twenty nine?
Really?
And, and under five three of, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Under five three of.
I gotta go to church and.
For the regular employee, uh, you changed that from just mayor to council, and that used to be personnel, instead of council, of the regular employee.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay.
Just like one and two.
With eight, yeah.
Twenty nine.
Is that under fire personnel?
Y'all just got it skipped, not fire.
Under regular, class, class three.
Just the regular employee.
A fence.
Oh, I thought we said that, um.
Well, we did on one and two, y'all just didn't talk this page.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
It just got skipped.
Okay.
That's one third five, they're going back to personnel.
Right here.
Well, twenty nine, class three.
Class, what about it?
Needs to have personnel committee in there, is that what you're saying, needs to be put back in?
Yeah, I have to put that back in.
She said she'd put it back in, okay, so it'd be lineup for the other ones, class one and two.
I think the, the first, the paragraph right under class three.
Mm-hmm, yeah, just make it, round that one, what class one and two, so, personnel.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm just messing, I have a protein bar, there's some pretty good out there, that's why I brought, I brought me some stuff, yeah, I did, I would have to.
Bring it up there, bro?
Okay, so we're on page thirty one, first offense, and this is driving offenses.
We're still on driving.
No, we're, we're, uh, we're on page thirty two.
Are we, what are the other first offenses, just put back personnel committee and employee?
Thirty one, yeah. Yeah, yeah, they counsel all of those.
Okay. Gotcha.
No, but what you were talking about, uh, thirty one, you tell her.
Yeah, all right. I'm on thirty two now.
Yeah, same, same personnel committee.
And council studies on that first paragraph, though.
Right.
Personnel committee is out of fire and police.
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 part of police, yeah.
Okay, but that last sentence, if additional suspension without pay or termination is determined by the city council, the action of the city council will be final?
Correct.
Okay, so that's good, we're good there, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, there. Termination appeal procedure.
Uh, since we leave the personnel committee in, then, you actually, I guess, put it that sentence the way it was. Take that council, uh, just either the way it was, since we're keeping the personnel committee in place?
Well, that was fire, this is fire and police, though.
That's civil service.
Yeah, you don't do everything.
It wants to be, we'll make it council.
Now, this is termination appeal procedure.
Oh, we're, okay, we're past the man, I'm sorry.
This is termination, that's, it just says, I think, this is read by employees, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
It just have, termination appeal procedure.
Yeah. So what am I supposed to do to it?
Did you go out to the person?
It was, okay. Except for fire and police.
All right, thirty three.
Okay.
Yeah.
We got that as it was, okay. All righty.
So now, page thirty four?
Well, thirty five, thirty four, I think, heading.
There's nothing on thirty four.
Thirty four is the page that.
We have to check on the history of how that happened.
Yeah, and then thirty five.
When and how that happened.
We'll add, uh.
So, uh, Mr. Brett asked a question, do we take it out until we find out about it, since, I mean, no one knows when it was voted on, so do we just exclude it for the time being?
My, my book and your books, the council books are correct, they didn't get the revised pages, and your book.
But, and it was not in the notes either, that it was approved by the council, and that's what you said, in the minutes, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be in the minutes somewhere.
I know, I'm gonna have to go back and find out why they don't, theirs isn't updated.
And where, maybe where the minutes are, if we can find it.
Yeah, cause it's, I mean, it could be years ago, I mean, they just may have missed one revision.
Well, and in the meantime, then, we need to.
I need to see those minutes whenever we find them, cause I know we didn't do it in the last, remember, three, we didn't do it.
Okay. No, it wasn't. And I'm not exactly sure of what.
Hey, I'm not sure exactly, but yeah.
But the change was, well, it used to be, you were hired at a ten, that was then, and it was done away with, not your administration, but the administration before, till there was not a set.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we have not received a change since, you can hire them at any step, which they have been hired in at any step. Let's see. In the last three years. Well, page thirty four, under new employees, you don't have that, Kathy? A new employee shall normally be compensated at the sixteenth step of the approved salary range?
Page, page thirty four, a new employee shall be compensated at a step of the approved salary range based on the department head's recommendation and the mayor's approval.
Okay, that's been changed, yeah.
Okay, so what we can do is, we can just leave this, because we're still gonna have to have a final draft.
Yeah, so what we could do is just leave this instead of another date to come back, right?
No, I'll bring everybody together.
I'm just saying, because we're about to get into wage, uh, wages and salaries, and I actually have some questions, because I don't understand the steps, I don't understand the ranges, and it needs to be a level plan here. So I have a lot of questions, and, uh, you have somewhere to be at five, you're going, you know, six, so, we just need to set another date when we can continue this.
Going to church. What, and I understand where she's coming from, and she talked about it before, just from the industry I was in, there was a schedule, and it was, it was very, you know, it's clear, and everybody did cut and dry, it was, there was never any discrepancies, you didn't. It didn't catch you in a situation where you had been unfair to somebody, or whatever, they gave, they gave us, or something, you know what I'm saying?
Definition.
A salary schedule, whatever.
Does, does the department heads have that?
Um, you gotta leave, leave department.
We don't have that.
Right, right, what I'm saying, I mean, well, it does, right, well, it does, if, in our job descriptions, it has the range, that you'll be hired in, I say, an airline will be hired at range twenty, for example, okay?
I mean, that doesn't mean too much, man.
I think you need some discretion, though, I want you to.
And then you go, that's range, then you go to step, it's a graph, and it has dollar figures, step one is this dollar, step two is this dollar.
Two percent between each step.
Who determines where they go in, that they all go in at the very first one?
The, the.
Or you determine that depending on.
Normally it's sixteen.
No, what we've been saying, doing in the past, is it starts at that range, step sixteen.
Okay.
And then, right below step sixteen, it has a dollar amount.
So he says, they didn't have the document, so we need to see that.
Okay.
If you don't, yeah, if you get us that, it'd be good to have, we need to see that, I need to, one, if you get it, why?
Okay, that'll be great.
For every, at every.
And, and.
We only have the same information.
Correct.
Is each department different?
No.
No, some, Eric has the same thing, now, ranges are different.
The job, the job description, the range is different.
Yeah.
But we all have the same information.
We all have the same graph chart.
I see, yeah.
Okay. Step sixteen is.
That'd be cool, I'd like to.
Because if you come, somebody looks for a job, and they get a good job, what's it like? Which is range twenty, step sixteen, that means nothing.
Is that, are we gonna go over council, are we, are we going on council in June, in June, does that have to?
So, you can go down and look.